It's 202 and I call this meeting super hard. We have a little technical problem getting that microphone working. We have roll call going on now. I see we have all of our trustees, including the director, business manager, treasurer, and even legal counsel. I'm acting chair for this meeting. The regular chair is not feeling up to it. She could come in. She doesn't want to infect us. I don't know if she has. I didn't ask. So according to CLN by laws, Article Two, Section Five, that's my job to step up and take the meeting. Let's see what we got next roll call. Okay, we got Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and that's going to be the public information passed. My nation, God, and God, and the just this promise.
Next up, we have public comments. It'll be the regular spiel. Speakers are to state their name and community and speak for no more than three minutes. Persons addressing the board are expected to observe a level of civility and decorum appropriate for a public meeting. No personal attacks or disruptions from the audience members will be tolerated. And the first person we have up is Mary Anna Copren.
Well, a very happy new year to this board, Director Walters, and the CLN management staff. I am extremely happy and hopeful for the imminent national return to sanity for more days. And especially for the righteous momentum this board and Director Walters are creating at our Community Library Network, Idaho's second largest library consortium. You are truly leading the way, not only in Idaho, but in the nation, for how to stem the tide of corrosive books for kids, not to mention complying with Idaho's new library material statute enacted last July. But alas, not all are so sanguine about our nation's and our region's prognosis. For example, I was at our beautiful Hayden branch just yesterday and saw this lobby display. Granted, it offered an array of books for adults. And as a member of Clean Books for Kids, our sole area focus has been and will remain books for minors. But as a result of this display, I felt pressed upon to make sure this board and CLN's management team were aware that this intentional theme and its specific selections may portend that the Hayden staff are alarmed about the future. So much so that they've set out a long table loaded with books to save readers from the depths of emotional depression, I want 2025 holds. Under the auspices of mental health literacy, some of the titles chosen by the Hayden staff for this display include "Conquering Fear," "When Things Don't Go Your Way," "The Anxiety Toolkit," and "Languishing: How to Feel Alive Again in a World That Wears Us Down." You may want to look into this situation, Director Walters, as there may be a crisis brewing among the staff there. And January isn't even Mental Health Awareness Month, which is still four months away from ending. Who knows what kind of a debilitating state we may be in four months from now? Tyranny, I'm sure. I had to share this book display photo on social media last night, and as of this morning, it had garnered four laughing emoji responses. So it seems that the community is not as alarmed as I. Seriously, however, since we know that mental health is no laughing matter, I hope this becomes at least an opportunity for a check-in with the Hayden staff who may be silently reaching out for help. Nevertheless, I thank this board and Director Walters for your clarity and perseverance. Soul drawn, as there is more hope and more reasons to rejoice on the horizon.
And here, no clapping, please. Jeff Lewis is the next speaker.
Jeff Lewis, Post Falls. Just wanted to, for the first chance, to welcome trustee Amber C. I remember when I was here, when you were interviewed for the trustee position, you quoted a Latin phrase, and I don't remember what the Latin was. But it turns out to be "The Best Teacher is a Good Book," is that right? You got it? Okay. And you also stated that you agree with the new Idaho library law. For me and all the other dads that I know, we appreciate that you stepped up to be a voice of reason for our wives and daughters. Thank you. Regarding children's books with sexually explicit material that are harmful to minors, at least at the last meeting, Director Walters said, quote, "First of all, some of that stuff, to be honest, should not have been collected to begin with." I've been reviewing some of these things, and as a master of English literature and a library science major, it doesn't take long, very long, that the overall literary value is lacking, and it checks all the boxes for legal review. We have had previous directors and board members refuse to even acknowledge that these books were even in the children's section. Thank you for saying the quiet part out loud, and your strong leadership in implementing the new law. I know later in the agenda, you will be talking about ideas for the segregated area for adult content. I thought about this. When a minor goes to a movie theater, they have access to the whole building and general areas of the theater, even though admission is restricted for movies that are prohibited for their age group. You may want to use the warning signs and labels, like the most in picture associations readings we already have in the segregated areas that you can talk about and discuss. Some of these are PG-13, which means parents strongly cautioned some material may be inappropriate for children, R minor restricted, NC-17, no one 17 and under admitted. These are just ideas as you discuss the probabilities of this series. Also, I want to thank you for the board for removing all the DEI policies two months ago and creating a policy that works for all our library staff based on merit instead of skin color. Days ago, Amazon and we had Facebook also joined the growing parade of people ending DEI policies. I have a list of 13 other American companies that have done away with it. Walmart, McDonald's, American Airlines, Boeing, down the line, Ford, Caterpillar, John Deere Lowes. But anyway, thank you for your policies you guys are implementing. You guys are doing great work. Keep it up.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jenny Holmes.
Good afternoon. My name is Jenny Holmes, and I live in Post Falls. Right now, we live on the west side, but we will be moving to the east side very shortly. I was a public school teacher for many years for elementary, and then I decided to stay home and homeschool my own four children all the way through high school. Then I've worked for over 20 years as an educational tutor for three homeschool co-ops in Washington State. I love the library, and even in college, I was a page. I don't know if they still call those staff members pages, but I dusted the microfiche machine. I also cleaned the card catalog, and I sorted the nonfiction sections, which can give you quite the headache. But I love the library, and I'm just thankful that you're trying to make the library better. I attend many, many meetings, city council meetings. I've been to NIC, I've been to planning and zoning, and I come to these meetings. And I applaud you for sitting there and taking the gut. I'm sure it's very hard to sit there and take it, because most of the time, the comments are negative. But another thing I've noticed about you, many of you are citizens that just decided to step up to the plate. And you're not perfect, and you're learning as you go, and that shows me as a citizen who would like to get involved in the future. Then I can do that, too. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nancy Harper.
Good afternoon. On December 24th, 2024, a U.S. District Court judge struck down two sections, I'm sorry, struck down Sections One and Five of Arkansas Act 372, declaring them unconstitutional. The Act 372 is similar in many ways to HB 710. Section One states that furnishing a harmful item to a minor is a Class A misdemeanor. This means that librarians can be arrested for, quote, "furnishing, presenting, providing, making available, giving, lending, showing, advertising, or distributing to a minor an item that is harmful to minors," unquote. The plaintiffs claims that harmful to minors wording is too vague. Does this mean just having it on the shelves? In striking down this provision, the court said, quote, "The purpose, if the purpose was to protect," I'm sorry, nervous, "to protect younger minors from accessing inappropriate sexual content in the library, the law will only achieve that end at the expense of everyone else's First Amendment rights." The law deputizes librarians as agents of censorship, and out of fear of litigation, it is likely they will shelf only books fit for young children and segregate or discard the rest," unquote. Although CLN librarians do not fear being arrested, they certainly are harassed, intimidated, and criticized for just having books some deemed harmful to minors, which is a vague and subjective term. Section Five states that anybody may challenge the appropriateness of a book, but it does not specify what the word appropriateness means. There are no restrictions to whom may challenge the material. The head librarian is required to create a committee of library staff who represent a diversity of viewpoints to review challenged materials. If the person challenging the material is unhappy with the results, then elected officials would make the final choice. The judge says this is wrong because elected officials are not trained in this area and are either influenced by outside groups or too worried about the next election. In striking down Section Five, the court said, quote, "It would permit committees and library committees and local government bodies to make censorship decisions based on content and viewpoint, which violates the First Amendment. This is an unconstitutional content-based restriction on protected speech. Act 372 regulates substantially more speech than the Constitution allows, and therefore violates the First Amendment rights of all the citizens," unquote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michelle Lippert.
Good afternoon, Michelle Lippert, Post Falls. At this point, the Crawford County, Crawford County, Arkansas has spent over half a million taxpayer dollars defending policies that target LGBTQ-themed books. These efforts have resulted in not one, but two decisive legal defeats. Why should this matter to you? Because the board is considering actions similar to those taken by the Crawford library system, and because, as stewards of the public trust, you bear a fiduciary responsibility to your community and have sworn to uphold the U.S. Constitution. On December 2022, three citizens of Crawford County initiated a campaign to remove LGBTQ books from the children's section of the library. This led to an upheaval, including the resignation of two board members and the library director. Under new leadership, the board moved to restrict LGBTQ-themed books to a segregated section and labeled them with purple labels, by the way, a decision approved by the Crawford County Farm Court. This policy triggered a lawsuit. On September 30th, 2024, U.S. District Judge PK Holmes III ruled that these actions violate the First Amendment. His judgment was clear. It is indispensable that the creation and maintenance of a segregated section was motivated in substantial part by a desire to impede users' access to books containing viewpoints that were unpopular or controversial. This constituted unconstitutional viewpoint discrimination, which is antithetical to the principles of free speech and access to information. The second lawsuit targeted the enforcement of Act 372, a state law aimed at restricting access to material deemed harmful to minors. A previous speaker addressed this in detail, so I'll simply focus on one aspect. The suit sought to prevent Clifford County from enforcing the law. The plaintiffs argued that this law encouraged censorship based on content and viewpoint. On December 24th, 2024, U.S. District Court Judge Timothy Brooks agreed, finding that the law violated the First Amendment. Two lawsuits, two losses, hundreds of thousands of wasted taxpayer dollars. These outcomes should
Drop it off.
Yes, these outcomes should serve as a stark warning.
Thank you. The next speaker is Teresa Burkett.
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Burkett. I live in Post Falls, and I'm president of the Library Alliance in North Idaho. In 2003, the Cedarville, Arkansas, School Board restricted students' access to the Harry Potter series, citing concerns over themes of disobedience, disrespect for authority, and witchcraft. The board required students to obtain parental permission before borrowing these books from school libraries. However, the U.S. District Court overturned this decision, ruling it violated students' First Amendment rights. The court emphasized that such restrictions stigmatized students, imposing a chilling effect on their right to access material. This case provides a cautionary tale for your board. Implementing similar restrictions, such as relegating books to an adult-only section, could create the same stigmatizing effect and expose this library network to significant liability. The Cedarville decision underscores key principles. Number one, the First Amendment right to read. The court affirmed that students have the right to access diverse information. Restricting books based on vague fears or disagreements with their content is unconstitutional. Two, stigmatizing of access. By requiring special permission or segregating books, the board created barriers that deterred students from exercising their rights. This stigmatization is not only unconstitutional, but also harms the community's trust in public institutions. Three, four responsibilities and the Bill of Rights. While boards have discretionary authority, they must operate within constitutional limits. The Bill of Rights protects individuals from arbitrary and viewpoint-based censorship. Recently, 140 books have been removed from the CLN shelves. Removing books for extended periods or segregating them to adult-only sections risks breaching policies and legislation, exposing this board to lawsuits. This removal raises serious concerns about compliance with laws that protect intellectual freedom and access to information. Justice Anthony Kennedy once said, "The First Amendment freedoms are most in danger when the government seeks to control thought or to justify its laws for that impermissible end. The right to think is the beginning of freedom, and speech must be protected from the government because speech is the beginning of thought," end quote. This board must decide whether to uphold these freedoms or risk undermining the principles of open access to information. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker signed up is, I believe, is Mike Bergson, or it could be Mick. I'm sorry.
Well, Nancy, forgive me the opportunity to speak. I didn't think this out, pre-prepare anything or write anything, but I'm optimistic that we're hopefully coming back to this thing called common sense, which I have concerns about that. I don't see that actually happening. But us, as adults, all of us in this room, we're not only stewards of this earth, but we're all here to protect the children. You know, nobody wants to censor or violate somebody's freedom of speech or, and/or to, let's personally let kids learn. When you start talking about impressionable minds, when you want to drop seed into a mind that's not fully developed, which is going to either lead to propaganda or indoctrination and sexualization, and some of these books, they go in the direction of glorifying incest and sex manuals for children. My God, people, we're all adults here. The animal community does better than taking care of their own young. Now, we're not going to let set down a set of keys to a Ferrari, a pack of Marlboro Reds, and a fifth of Jack Daniels. You know, and personally enough, we live in a country here where you can grow up and do anything you want, become a babe, want to wear dress when you get to be a certain age, go ahead. But when you start talking about with young children going into altering alterations to their body, to genitalia, when their minds are not fully formed, you're creating harm there. And it is ridiculous that we're in a situation like this. Thank God, hopefully get back to common sense. Nobody wants to censor any types of material. You know, you're old for a very long time, you're young for a very short time. Do not indoctrinate kids. Teach kids how to learn, how to make good decisions, and don't impregnate their mind with shit. Sorry, but it is. Don't impregnate their minds before they've had a chance to grow and decide who they want to be. And you know what? I see that this stuff that's going on, not only in our community, but throughout the whole world, is a cancer. I know it's going to stop, but you know what? The majority of us, and I guess you'd be wanting to call it the service or whatever, we're a peaceful-minded people, but don't harm kids. I think the sleeping giant's been waking up here. There is people, we're going to keep an eye on you. We wish you nothing but the best. We have zero guns against any gay, straight, one of your colors, whatever. Bullshit. Thank you. That's all I need.
Thank you. That's everyone we have on the list. We have a few minutes left. Is anyone else who did not sign up to wish to speak? Yes, please. We'll give a name and a community, please.
Karen Johnston, and I'm from Post Falls, and I'm kind of new to this discussion. But as a parent, as someone who's been around kids all her life, I find the idea of not censoring certain information and opportunities for children absolutely obscene. Yes, we have rights as adults, and we also have a responsibility to protect our kids. I'm sorry, but my children did not have certain freedoms when they were growing up in my home, and I censored a great deal for their good and their benefit.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, that concludes the, go back to there, our public comments session. I'll return this quickly. Trustee Foss.
I meant to say something about the agenda at the beginning took off, but it seemed like some of the policies aren't, that we were going to review aren't listed here. Is there, is it just an oversight? You know, the ones that we gave to the attorney last
Can you be more specific? What are we missing?
I don't know where children in the library. I don't know where
It's part of the packet.
I know, but it's not listed here. You've got, you've got number 12, policy packet, and you've got safety, computer policy, and you've got eight department packet discussion withdrawal, but you don't have these library cards for minor and some of these other policies we discussed. Are we going to discuss them?
I think the library cards for minors is part of my packet. What else were you
No, it's not listed.
The director, I'm sorry.
I don't know if there's any confusion, but Agenda Item 11. It's a discussion of 181517, 1517B, which includes the legal review of the policy packet, which was sent, that's all of the ones from before. And in addition to that, it's a discussion of the adult access only restricted area policy of C+, and then the mature content collection policy, which is the director's version of that. So they're all being discussed on the agenda of 11.
You're good. You're good. Yeah. All right. Okay, so the agenda is the consent agenda, item number five. Anybody have any questions or comments regarding that? And the CLN financial statements were, are the table packet they were not sent in the mail?
Michelle has a question.
Michelle, play that last thing. Sorry, trustee Foss. Chair.
Okay, so on the first page of the minutes, number four, the first bullet point, says, "Discussed article in a paper." The name of the paper is incorrect. It was the Cutney Journal.
Maybe, yeah, because she doesn't talk very loudly.
She can turn her mic up. Maybe she doesn't
Yeah, you're coming through very faint. We're trying to get you.
Okay, I'll bring it up closer. Is that better? Number four on page one. Number four, the first bullet point, says, "Discussed article in a paper." The name of the paper is incorrect. It was the Cutney Journal.
We repeat, we're looking for her again.
Number four bullet, it wasn't CDA Press, it was the Cutney Journal.
Okay, okay. Impression's been made. There are comments, questions regarding, that was dealt with both for the minutes from the last meeting and the CLN financial report, that's part of the consent agreement. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Do you want to date on that?
Yeah, I guess so. December 19th. It's a move to accept the consent agenda dated December 19th as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. The honest habit is approved. Here. Trustee Foss.
Just for clarification, I guess it was the minutes and then the CIN financial. We, okay, so we got two copies of that mailed to us and then, okay.
Did anyone get the CIN financials? The CIN financials were not mailed. I don't believe
Emailed. Emailed.
They were emailed, yes.
Okay.
Next to you, it was him, Kenny. Next, I have one, the agenda, item number six, three, Library Network, the financial statements. Those. I'll make one comment here, one or two. It looks like we have a very generous amount of donations as far as revenue. Our total salaries and benefits are right on target for where we're supposed to be this five hundred and fifty year. I also found it interesting, the utilities are well below for each of the different libraries, maybe because it hasn't been bitterly cold, but those look good to me. We have one question for the director. The repairs and maintenance for Post Falls, I see we're pretty high on that, and I don't remember exactly how we're doing that with regard to our insurance, but it looks as if we're 53% into what we're protecting for the year. Is there anything there? So does it know? Or we, we had a large expense upfront and then not expect to be spending at the same rate as the year progresses? Oh, I'll get it. The line item number, I'm sorry, 45. I should have said that. Okay, this is the rest of what we
Yeah, I'm just looking at the notes for it. Expenses include the removal of degree and jump to both fall, postfall, end cap, bookshelf. So unless they'll do, I'm going to give them the end cash. I hope some of that money is going to be reimbursed by anything that was damaged. So the end caps, you know, and everything, so I'm going to go through that.
I'll see you around.
So after reading the explanations, I tried to refine it, and I couldn't for some reason, but I had, I just wanted to get a little more information on the new copy machines that are going to be needed and, and when is that? And then it also, and if somebody could tell me the line item, because I literally couldn't find it again. Also, it said something about possibly leasing, and why would we do that? And is that like a, something that we've done in the past?
You know, definitely, our business manager, yes.
Thank you for the question. I met with the sales manager for the copiers, he came in to do an assessment. The copiers are, were seven years old, which is the lifespan of copiers. We have several that are beyond the number of copies they can normally handle, so that was actually good news. He said that He said that, um, if you think of a a truck that can get two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand miles. Our copiers are at about four hundred thousand miles. So we've done quite well with what we have, but they are starting to break down, we're having to call the repairmen more often. And the parts will no longer be available probably as of next year. So it is time to look at replacing them, either paying for them outright outright like we did last time. Or leasing, either one is a valid option. And they will be meeting with us as we start preparing the budget for next fiscal year to go into more detail.
Thank you, and do you know what what line item it is that I just couldn't find it again?
Sixty-four is copiers. On the income statement. And so right now, we have budgeted for this year ten thousand three hundred.
But somewhere else on this, it talked about.
Oh, numbers, number seven.
Oh, goodness, I didn't look at income, thank you.
Trustee, everybody.
Yes, I. I heard you mention, uh, and this may be for the director of insurance. But were you actually addressing line sixty-six where we are? At fifty-two percent, and we have another, and according to the description. For line sixty-six here on the rep, we've got, um, no expense and chill. Forty-nine thousand, which is due on the fifteenth of April, so, um, I guess my question is. Is this, it it, when you put this together with that forty-nine thousand, that's gonna put us pretty well over, um, the. Budgeted amount, is it under, am I reading that wrong?
Oh, business manager.
Line item sixty-six for insurance is just premium for Great American and I C R E M. We have already paid all of Great American's premium, all we have left is one half of I C R E M's premium. And that will be the remainder, which will take us to exactly one hundred ten thousand.
And then enough, there are enough things we want. Thank you.
Trustee plus.
So, uh, my question is on item, line item seventy, professional services, um. It seems like we're inching, uh, up more than what we'd expect for the budgeted amount of forty thousand and I. You know, some of that has been for the accountant and it's not legal anymore, but accountant and maybe the architect when we had a project, but. Looking at the description, um. I'm a little confused what we're doing, sending text messages to patrons to twillow. And I think this is where we're doing some of the, uh. We're we're now, uh, going outside with this I solve for timesheets and payroll, is that? What we're doing there, but I I'm just wondering whether this is was a upfront expense and it's not gonna keep going up every month?
Business manager, go ahead.
Line item seventy on professional services, we spent five hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents in December. You'll notice that the year-to-date budget is at twenty-one point fifty-five, right now, um, we would be at twenty-five percent. So we're actually below budget on that line item. As far as the Twilio expenses, that was just to be transparent with the board of how some of that money is being spent. That's been going on for years, and it basically sends SMS text messages to the patrons to let them know that their books have arrived. So that's a normal professional expense. We assessed, uh, that we had a potential risk in the library with only one person knowing how to do payroll. And so in order to accommodate that, we have contracted with I solve. Which is going to be coming out of the software line for the most part, this particular professional service was, um, is not gonna be constantly coming out of this line. It'll be coming out of software, thirteen thousand, we're able to handle it in the budget, and it will be starting at the end of February. Which will allow us have a payroll, have payroll outsourced so that we don't run into a problem with the one person. Who knows how to do payroll if it's not available, who ensures employees are paid and vendors are paid.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the audit is line item fifty-eight, that's part of professional services.
The audit is going on right now, we're in the first week of two, and it is part of the audit line item. Which is number fifty-eight. So that is separated from professional services.
Other questions, comments regarding C I M financial statements? I entertain a motion to approve financial, C I M financial statements dated December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, before we do that, I think. Part of that should be this carried forward, is that part of this?
Yes.
It is, okay, um. To the business manager on the carry forward, is this? Is is there any confusion on any of this now, cuz we are now. Uh, well, actually, this. We're one month away from being at our bare minimum. Cuz we should buy on July or January twenty-fifth be receiving our taxes, but it doesn't show up here, this is the end of December, but.
Correct.
Is is there any confusion with, uh, insurance or the balances on any of this?
No, everything is going quite smoothly, uh, you'll notice that we have one extra item under the finances with the carry forward actual. From the end of September. And so we're we're doing okay.
Why, why aren't those balances as of twelve thirty on the end of December instead of September, that's. I guess that's one thing that's confusing me, is I would have expected this to be up to date as of the end of, end of December.
Are you talking about the carry forward actual paper?
Uh, yes, checking back, checking account balance, I C S account balance, you got it at the end of September instead of. So that's kind of seems to be misleading, cuz I expected this to be as of the end of.
So the director and I went through the carry forward actual at the end of the fiscal year to start the beginning of fiscal year. We have a working copy to show you for the end of December, but we chose to start with the September one for this meeting. So we can provide the final numbers for the end of December next.
Now, we entertain a motion to accept the financial statement, the C I M financial statements for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I move that we accept the December twenty twenty-four financial statements.
It's been moved to accept a C I M financial statement for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, all those in favor, say aye.
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 There, uh, yes, financial statements here, buddy. Next item on the agenda is the director's report, item number seven on the agenda.
Thank you very much, um, the packet, uh, from my communications department, we've been trying to improve our stability's. Uh, brochure which we send out, um, and it's getting more and more self-explanatory and it's, uh, gives you, um. A nice overview of what transpired, uh, upon, I won't speak too much to it, but you know, and what the statistics. Just move on to some other, uh, issues and then we can, we can relax on that. Um, obviously, since the last meeting, I've been focused on a lot of policies and and. Procedures and organizational, uh, stuff, which is the things in the works, uh, I mentioned, obviously, the intentionalist to provide some sort of gratitude. Uh, to all those that were involved in helping with the post fall and Apple, um, renovations and, uh. The opening, so we are working on, again, I'm working with my communications department, we'll have the, uh, working on a banner. Which will, um, show the logos of the various organizations that helped, uh, this banner will be placed at Apple, one at Apple and two at post falls, just, you know, for. Um, outside, people gonna think that's by company, uh, just a way to say thank you, and it'll be up for a few months to to show our badges to all those involved. Uh, we're working on some restructuring of space over the Hayden, Hayden library, um, kinda did that here as well. Obviously, you know that the district, um, staff shares base with post fall, that makes sure it's based at Hayden. Um, it was nice when we were at Menon Drive a little bit, cuz, uh, part of us, we were all, the the post falls, we were all together, but. But as it is right now, the district staff are kind of separated out, uh, but we were working in Hayden, uh, trying to, um. Create more space for the Hayden library itself, so that they they can get the most out of their their building and then. And then the district more consolidated and what is the technical services area and program area, uh, in the back area of, um, Hayden. And I'm hoping that when we have a meeting at Hayden, I think it's in April, get a chance to walk around and 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 see that. Won't won't be finished by then, but I'm just, uh, give you a chance to see what, referring to. The Harrison project, uh, it's going alright, I guess, the, uh, they're still hoping to complete it within the season, obviously without good weather. There has been a slight change to it, uh, they're having issues, I think, as I mentioned before, they had issues with with meeting up with the slope of. Of, uh, the Harrison sidewalk versus the the library ramp proper. Um, one thing that's been adjusted is is our use of the book drop, the external book drop at Hayden. So I had, uh, at Harrison was, uh, was part of that ramp structure and that was causing another problem, um, so. So we're we're taking that book drop piece out of it for now and 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 conversation with facilities as well as with. With Harrison supervisor, uh, we'll be working on a different way to handle the book drop, but, uh, but in the meantime, that simplifies the project. So we're still hoping to have the ramp completed, um, and everything according to, uh, to ADA and everything, so there's just been a slight adjustment. In the nature of the of the ramp, but everything is, uh, should be satisfactory when they, and as long as the weather holds, it should be good. C I N, just a comment on C I N, uh, they're still going through some restructuring, uh, having to do with their. Status, I guess, at the state level. And haven't, not even completed yet, but that's what they're working on, the one big issue that I think we hope to. Solve the pressing issue is courier, right, I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the structural developments of C I N over the years. You know, was based on sharing an I L S system and stuff, but now with the, the amount of material being moved, the courier poses significant challenge. I will say that, uh. We'll be looking at just very preliminary stage, but we are thinking about the idea of C L N handling its own courier internally, like some other C I M members do. Some C I M members will receive all, the district will receive all the materials at one spot and then they take care of it themselves, so what happens right now is C L N. The the C I, C I N courier is the C L N courier and it's and it's hitting all of our seven locations within the C I, within the context of C I S scheduling, so. So we're looking at all those things, um, but again, it's preliminary stage as far as C I is concerned, just trying to solve some courier problems. Um, as is evident from this, uh, meeting, I've worked on some organizational. Issues here, collection development department, technical services department, we're a single department, it's not really best practice of the mission. So with finance department, H R, other local, main departments in person, and so. That's kind of why I'm saying this, uh, question development, uh, agenda item, but that's what I'm working on. Alright, now finally, just wanted to make a comment with the legal review of library materials pursuant to the Freedom of Library Protection Act. So I just wanna reiterate, and I said, I'd say the same thing, that I'm probably said it since the very beginning, but I, reiterate. Uh, materials withdrawal and reconsideration policy, the non-specificity speak to an internal legal review of library material. This would be procedural matter handled by the library director. The materials withdrawal and reconsideration policy does include two specific request mechanisms, one is a request for reconsideration of materials. And the other is a request for relocation of material harmful to minors. Under the request for reconsideration of materials, the mechanism says a review team of library staff will be selected to review the item fully using the material collection and acquisition policy. And I'll just say that there have been no requests for reconsideration of materials since my. It's never been, I've never seen one, I've almost thrown across my desk, there's been no request for reconsideration of materials. The other mechanism in the policy is a request for relocation of material harmful to minors. Under this mechanism, it says a completed form is submitted to C L N per the instructions on the form. The form says the complete form, uh, will be given to the library director who will review the form for evaluation recommendations. Then back to the policy, it says, the C L N staff at the direction of the library director shall review the form. And the material unquestioned and recommended disposition within ten business days. So as the director, I see a distinction between the two parameters of the two mechanisms, the request for relocation of material harmful to minors is at the director's direction. As the new director, I'm dealing with significant organizational restructuring to evaluate considerable strain on job duties and performance. I'm striving to achieve efficiency within this organization. And on this agenda, for example, I'm bringing the changes to the collection development department, which will address many of the challenges that C L N faces. Responsibly, but implementing the state legislation. So the trustees would like to clarify, the policy restricts the library director's discretion when dealing with requests for relocation of material forms. I am happy to comply, I'm here to serve the board. As will be evident later, this task will actually fall to the collection development department if this policy, if these. Things that we're talking about later go through. Starting the request for relocation of material submission, the day sixteen have been deemed harmful to minors based on strictly, just strictly on the state law text. However, they await relocation because the board is still completing the policies governing the area deemed for access only, so. So sixteen, uh, have been deemed harmful to minors, again, I'm not gonna comment, I don't think I'm supposed to comment on stuff said today, but I always, I always get this. The emails, the feedback and the stuff that the board sees, but this has nothing to do with viewpoint, this is simply the text, the law of the text, right, so it's not a. It's got nothing to do with viewpoint or censorship, I'm just saying that based on the text of the law and the text of the book, right, they match, so. But again, nothing, they've not been, they've not been moved. Because we haven't decided where they're moving to, so, uh, so they're kind of sitting there in, in limbo, as it were. Regarding the one hundred and forty titles mentioned in the previous meeting, no review of those titles has taken place this time. In fact, it has taken most of the time between the last meeting and this meeting simply to retrieve and organize the items for the review. And again, this speaks a lot to, but this is all, this is the most procedural work within the library itself on how to handle this situation, I don't have to figure out. How to handle, so I'm just handling it, uh, in the best way possible in order to library. So I would just like to reassure the board that none of the hundred, none of the one hundred and forty items have been removed from the collection. Or should be considered out of circulation. As I clearly mentioned in the previous meeting, I'm working with my technical services department on the best method for handling the internal legal review within the I L S. Currently, we are utilizing the checkout mechanism, which makes these one hundred and forty items not removed or out of circulation, not anymore removed. Or out of circulation than the thousands of other books which are currently out. In the I L S, they're still accessible to our patrons via the I L S calls, requests, they're they're still there. And it's simply a question of establishing a workable and efficient procedure for this internal review, so about. Me or one of my staff having to go to the shelf, take it off, pull up a chair, review it, but then leave it there. Cuz we have other things to do to run the library, go back, hope it's still there, though it's not there, or again, so it's, it's completely impractical and unworkable. To to to, you know, to achieve this implementation of the legislation without some kind of mechanism in place, that's all that's happened with the hundred and forty items. It's just, uh, I don't know how else one would think that it could be even possible to review them, but that's all that's happened, they're not, they're not removed, they're not. They're not anymore removed than any other item that's checked out in in the system, and we have thousands of items checked out. You did. We had three hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen items checked out last year. Twenty twenty-three, so it's just, it's just part of the mechanism. Anyway, uh, just again, I'm just trying to reassure the board, uh, there is no question whatsoever of book banning taking place at the C L N's. The C L N is just using normal library mechanisms to carry out what I'm sure everyone in Idaho wants the C L N to do, which is obey the law. So also important to, for me to report, that should be evident in the policy we're discussing, that there is no question. Of a library collection being construed as censorship or book banning. A library is a collection of. A library is a collection of materials. And more specifically, it is a collection of collections. This is the fundamental, this is fundamental to the profession and I, I said this, my directive at the beginning, I tell it. This is the fundamental aspect of the profession and institution. Classification, cataloging, holding and managing collections is librarianship. So from the beginning, I've been trying to comply with the new law using normal library practice of a special collection, collection within a collection. If that is construed as book banning or censorship, then the libraries have been banning large print books, inspirational fiction, local history, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, for a long time. Right? Some libraries will even segregate biographies into their own section using a little tweak of Dewey so that they all sit in a certain number, right? They do it all the time, it's our job, we are a collection of collections. One could argue that the children's section is a special collection, right? This is our job, this is what my profession is, this is our expertise. And just as a side note, currently at Hayden Library, there's a genealogy collection in its own room with surveillance. With a sign that says, under surveillance, right? In this case, the surveillance is for the sake of the value of the material, which makes perfect sense. I'm not sure because I wasn't here, I don't know when it was established and I don't know if there was a public outcry at the time. Like, why are, why are we being surveilled to look at the genealogy collection, right? You know, my policy is what I'm trying to push forward speaks for itself, but the bottom line here is this has nothing to do with some of the things that are discussed in the public forum about viewpoints and it's strictly complying with the new legislation in a library which follows library professional practices, that's it. So there's not, there's nothing really here of a controversial nature, I don't really see any controversy in anything that's going on here. Because this is strictly has to do with a new legislation which causes, it becomes the reason for the collection, the special collection, I'm not sure why we separate inspirational fiction. Some libraries would say, don't do that, someone would say, don't separate biographies out, don't separate a large print. Right? Don't do those kind of tweaks within the collection to separate out or segregate out. But we do it all the time, that's what libraries do, we are a collection of collections. And so I just, I just want to reassure the, reassure the board because I know you hear things and I just, I don't want you to think that there's anything going on here at the CLN under my directorship other than the the best possible professional library activity following all the traditional standard library practices from time immemorial. That's the end of my review.
I'll jump down first, trustee Evans ready, I'll get back to you.
Thank you, thank you for that, Director Olson, that was very, very well said and I appreciate it. I just want to make sure I understand, so help me with this, understand, get my, get my, my mind wrapped around this. So there are two meanings for patrons or individuals who patronize the library, citizens, whatever you want to call them, to request material be looked at. One is a reconsideration of material and one is a request for relocation. The reconsideration of material, I'm taking that to mean that that's a reconsideration, whether it ought to be in the collection at all. Whereas with the relocation of material in compliance with the law that was, that went into effect on one July specifically. It's asking that certain obscene material be taken away from the access or accessibility by minors, is that correct so far?
It was fine. Yeah, yeah, there's just a few mechanisms. One is requesting to remove an item from the collection, reconsider its ability to be there. And the other one is the request for relocation of material.
But but isn't there a third one, isn't weeding at the, at your, at the librarian's behest, right?
Yeah, so at the very beginning of that policy, it does talk about the withdrawal of materials. And then we, and then just refers to, and we're going to talk about the state and the policy, but it just refers to standard library methods for weeding material.
And this is the continuous process.
We would do that all the time and if I wanted to pull a hundred and forty books to my office or the collection development department's office to speed up that process. If I need to pull a hundred and forty books to IT or collections to to re, put a label on it, to cover it, to fix something, I mean, this is just normal. This is completely normal to, in order to work with the material that we are holding, needs to move them around and do things with them, so let's.
And so finally, then, those three, this is, this is the last part of my analysis, if you tell me I'm correct here, maybe I'm not. Those three are distinct from acquisition, which is a different aspect. When, when materials are either repurchased or are bought off of some kind of list that you might see as a director that comes from, who knows, I mean, the New York Times bestsellers. I don't even know what list you would get that said, there are these new books and you should buy these.
Yeah, that's correct, so there's another policy, which is the selection and acquisition policy. And that refers to what that says, yeah, so that would be the purchasing of the material. This is, and then the policy that has these requests in it are the sort of withdrawal of materials, you know, two different policies.
Alright, thank you so much, thank you.
I want to reiterate to the public and especially to the director that from the trustee's point of view, especially my point of view. We want you to do this, the second section, materials harmful to minor, starts out, CLN shall not promote, give or make available materials harmful to minor and any, to any minor. The library should take reasonable steps to restrict access in Idaho codes. And material harmful to minors shall be relocated to these sections. So this is really separate from the withdrawal part, I mean, the reconsideration part later. And I personally had the discussion with the previous library director who felt that wasn't the librarian's job. They thought they should wait until somebody from the public requests that it be moved. And no, the library staff is obligated, under this policy, under Idaho code, to take action before somebody does this. So you are completely within your authority to pull them off by this paragraph right here. And I we, as the, or at least the majority that approved this policy, want the staff to not make this material available. So you're fine.
Other questions for the director regarding the director's report, trustee Robbins? And if anybody sees trustee Robbins, and I can't see her raising her hand, so if you all might let me know once in a while.
So two things, oh, first, I think we need to start giving more time for the director's report on the agenda. Because our, our lovely new director always has some really good information and it, we always have questions for him after and it's definitely over ten minutes. But my question to the director is, can you give me a, maybe a percentage of, I forget if you said forty-some books? What percentage of those are from, already from the general collection and what percentage are from the children's?
Are you, sorry, are you asking about the one hundred and forty titles?
Oh, one hundred and forty, yeah.
Oh, the one hundred and forty titles, off the top of my head. I'm visually imagining a bookshelf with a number book, predominantly it's children's. There's probably maybe ten, eight to ten that probably, not probably, but are adults. And maybe one or two of those are nonfiction. And so, and some of the adult ones were, I wanted to look at because they're the same author as the children's ones. And so it's that whole issue of, sometimes young adult fiction, you know, has authors that, and in a, in a set. Where you'll have, so originally, and I think I said this at the very beginning, I'm not, what, my priorities are children's materials. So the reason why there's some adult ones is that one forty, usually, for the most part, it's because it was the same author. And I wanted to get a context of, of, because again, it has nothing to do with viewpoint, it's that they do with the law and the actual text of the law. So I pulled something out once to get a sense of what those words are at that level versus the other level within the context of a same author, because everyone's publishing or writing it. So I just thought, that's, that's kind of the reason why some of those adult ones were, well, this is all an assessment, it's a question development, so I'm just doing my job.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee, time management, let's jump over to agenda item number eight, which is the collection development department packet discussion. And in there I saw we have currently a combination of persons is taking both jobs of the collection development, if I understand correctly, if the director can correct me. And the technical services are both managed and taken care of by one person. The position is now two positions and there are two different job descriptions associated with that. And then part of the same package is changing the terminology in the materials withdrawal reconsideration policy for the name and nomenclature going from department to library and before, so anyway, it's just, it looks like it's just to keep them aligned with the policies we have. So is the director want to speak to this particular item before we ask questions on it? I review both job descriptions by yourself, I don't have any issues with them.
Yeah, just a little background, I mean, I just came here mid-September. To me, I don't think you can get really efficient and quality, you know, performance out of a single person who's tasked with with being the collection development manager and the technical services manager. Technical services department has, is one of, I think maybe the second largest department we have with multiple staff that the person has to oversee, there's that evaluation component. The person actually that wore the hat, that wore the hat of ordering supplies, general supplies throughout the district. So it was a very big plate and it just isn't efficient. And if, and if we're going to take seriously the legislation and we want to have good quality, robust collection development where we're not just clicking, you know, yes, purchase it because it's on the New York Times bestseller, we want to take back our professional quality, right? And I really felt the need to separate these two positions out. Obviously, I talked to my, the person who was both, the person who helped draft these and they have, you know, first dibs on this kind of thing. Like, I respect my internal, you know, my staff and what they want out of their life and careers. But in the end, the goal here is to separate these two out and the person is going to be taking technical services management role. And then I will be wanting to post the collection development position and get that done as quickly as possible. So that, as you can see, the accompanying material withdrawal reconsideration adjustments are basically to reflect the fact that we have our collection development department that would handle all this stuff. But even if I'm in the spoke of the director, I have a lot of other stuff to do, but in the absence of that, you know, I'm just doing my job, so, so that's what you're looking at.
Yeah, and I was going to say, when we go through this, we don't have to go through this line by line unless someone wants to. We have two different job descriptions or position descriptions. There are no issues with those, I'd rather we say, yes, we approve those at some point before we look at, unless we're going to do it as a package and also update the accompanying policy. Trustee, thoughts?
Yeah, I think you should keep the policy separate. My question on the two positions is, let me understand, you have one position already filled, one employee that will take one of these positions. But do you have the salary available in the budget? I don't think we're overloaded on the budget. Where's, where are you, how are you going to fund the second position? This is, this is your responsibility, it's not the board's to say that, you're in charge of the salary, so.
Yeah, so, yes, and so if you can imagine these two job descriptions put together, that person did all of that. So it's the separation of the duties and yes, the technical services manager who was both has requested to stay with the technical services department. And so my, my goal is to hire a collection development manager. I wasn't going to necessarily talk the budget until I knew that this was approved. But yeah, I suppose at the next meeting I'd be coming forward with a solution to how to immediately pay for this. And then at the budget discussions for the next fiscal year, it would exist within that budget there where we're paying for. So there's the two components, there's one, yes, definitely, I'm going to be reworking the budget that I'm going to, that will be proposing for twenty-six, based on a lot of the restructuring at the top level, management level, which the CLN definitely needs. That's the first piece, though, is how do I, how do I do this more quickly, right? And I didn't want to belabor this particular meeting with that until I knew that this was actually a go, so that would be coming, yes.
Other questions regarding the position descriptions themselves? You have one, trustee, thoughts?
It was a follow-up, there's, there's no reason you can't fill the position right away if you have a way to do it. I just, you don't have to wait till the next budget season, maybe that's your only option, so I guess we'll hear from you next time. But anyway, I, I think your ideas are great here on this.
There's no further discussion, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the two position descriptions that were provided in the packet. The collection development manager and the technical services manager.
Awesome.
Very good, it has been moved, that we approved the two new position descriptions, the collection development manager position and the technical services manager. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Approved, let me see, I'm putting my wording here, it's, okay, we have aye, so it's hereby approved. And now we can associate with that, it appears that the wording has been upgraded or updated for the materials withdrawal and reconsideration policy. The policy dated six seventeen and twenty-four. And it appears to me that when it just said collection development or go date, when you return stuff, it goes at collection. The library and staff now assess the collection development department. So are there questions and issues or how do we want to approach this particular one? It appears to me strictly that it's terminology changes to reflect the changes for these position descriptions. Trustee Robinson.
Under request for reconsideration of material on page two, the last paragraph, it's, I don't know if a sentence was supposed to be lined out, but if you go down to the one, the third green sentence says the item in question will not be removed from the collection during a reconsideration process. And then the very next sentence said the item in question will be removed from the shelf during a reconsideration process. So does that just mean that it'll be removed from the shelf because people will be reading it? Because I, I find those two sentences, I don't know, a little bit confusing.
If I can, my own guess, real fast and I'll be direct to answer it, it's still, it's still in the collection. It's just not available because it's being reviewed, but the director can correct me.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the nicest, you know, wording, policies don't tend to be artistic and beautiful language. But, but yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to help educate, you know, the community and, and obviously I'm at the service of the board. But there is a difference between removal from a shelf and removal from a collection, right? You can't say it was removed from the collection if it's not on the shelf, because that would mean three thousand items were removed from the collection last, last year. It's not, that's not language that makes any sense in the library world. It will, the items under review, whether it's a reconsideration or a request for relocation, they will not be removed from the collection. They will not be removed, and then, and then that goes back to the next, oh, wrong page three, that big green part there, right? The item in question will not be removed from the collection during a legal review. However, will be removed from the shelf during the legal review process as necessary for the exam, for examination of the question development department. So I'm getting a lot of feedback, you know, and I hear people saying, you know, books are being removed from the collection. An absurdity, they're not being removed from the collection, they're being reviewed and to do that, I'm not going to pull up a chair next to a book in the middle of Post Falls to read a book to assess it for legal, you know, legality. And then just put it back on the shelf and hope that the next time I get there in my busy schedule or the collection development librarian's busy schedule, that it's still there. So we are not removing books from the collection, but we are having to remove them from the shelf, right? And so that's all that distinction is being made, just really an extra sentence to make it really clear that that's what's happening.
And if I could just go quick, follow it, so when you remove the book, say there's five books and there's three people reviewing them. When you remove the book, say there's five books and there's three people reviewing them. Would you remove from the shelf all five books because you're also removing them from the shelves? Until you figure it out, or would you just remove three from the shelf and leave the other two there?
Well, that would, yeah, again, that would depend on the process, right? So i- if this whole collection development goes through and it's a question development department, then the question development manager, if he, if that he or she has that staff. Right? Then you you could have multiple copies being being read. I mean, it also depends on, I mean. You wouldn't necessarily do that if it was, we're talking about a legal thing here, right? So i- if, you know. If there's a chance that something is against the law, then you could remove them all so that in the process of reviewing them. You know, you're at least being prudent in what could be illegal. Now, also, there are differences with, like, you can remove multiple copies, but they're not all the same edition, right? So it could be different. So uh, objecting to something on page twenty five, but it's not on page twenty five, the other edition's on page thirty five, like. So you have to look at the, you have to look at the materials, right? Especially if you're cataloging, you're classifying, nobody catalogs or classifies books without having them in hand. Right? So that's normal practice, right? So so, yeah, I mean. It could be multiple reasons why you would remove all of them. Right? It could be because X number of people are reviewing it, so you need those extra copies. It could be for legal prudence, right? It could be for a variety of reasons. Yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, I went for myself. I want to clarify, on page two, that whole last paragraph. It appears to me, and just to make sure I'm reading correctly, that the library director has no involvement whatsoever in the review process. And it's sent into the collection development department. They review it, it gets sent back to the person that submitted it. The person doesn't like it, wishes to appeal it, it goes back to, it doesn't go back, it goes to the board. Is the library director supposed to be any part, is anywhere in this involved in here? It doesn't, it doesn't say that to my knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, I most of like you said at the beginning, it's it's just corrective language based on the new job description. So I wasn't changing the policy. So previously, the library. Director wasn't mentioned there anywhere, I don't think. But but I guess, I mean, on the organizational chart. The collection development department is directly supervised by the director, right? The chart has other. Parts of the organization directly supervised by the assistant director, um, but but the collection development department has is directly supervised by the director. So. By default. You know, if 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 I was gonna review the collection development manager on a quarterly basis, then I'm finding that, you know, all of his or hers. You know, dealings with reconsiderations have. Been bumped up to the board or, you know, weren't happy. I mean, they were just obvious or procedural review process. Uh, I mean, I could add it if it's better, but it didn't really affect whether or not I have oversight of the collection development department.
Yeah, I I think the way it's written here and everyone else can look at that. The library director has no involvement whatsoever at the review process. It strictly goes to the collection development department. Goes back to the submitter. If the submitter is not pleased and they want to appeal it, it goes to the board. Without ever having gone by the director. It appears to me that way when I read it.
Well, that's true. I mean, I mean, it was implied because I have direct oversight of the entire organization. Uh, but.
Wait, no, I'm going trustee plus.
How many are in the collection development part department? Is it this one person or this one position you're hiring?
Well, because it didn't exist, right? It would be the one person. Previously, it was the department had. Multiple staff because it was, it was both. It was the collection development and technical services department. Which has multiple staff doing tech services things. I'm not sure whether the manager previously. Enlisted other members of the tech services department to do collection development. Although I think there was a reason higher before it came. Which might have gone into that department or dealing with library alone and stuff. So. Well, I'm trying to establish department. It will start with a manager alone and then depending on budget, it'll increase.
Thank you. Trustee plus.
So I I'd like a consensus agreement to add. And library director after collecting development department, just so that we don't have one person only. Reviewing it if that's if the department or if the department's unstaffed. At least have something there. We were vague before by saying library staff. Uh, this is more specific.
What you propose.
The propose is just is to add after in green collection development department, add and library director.
Director, I'm clear with that?
Yes, uh, yes, yes.
All right. Oh, okay. I have one one input. I think it's the only other one I have on page three. Uh, at the top, I'll read through the sentence so it makes more sense. The request for relocation material offered by minors or. Maybe filled out submitted by any minor who obtains material, so forth, so forth, so. Um. Guardian or child obtained material in violate, this is in violation of the provisions. I would think it would seem to be, it believed to be a violation. Because someone can challenge a book and it's not a violation of Idaho statute. So I I just think that maybe it's 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 getting put out there saying that the. Parent or legal guardians of what of the child obtained a material says right now in violation of the provisions of Idaho code. They believe it to be a violation, in my opinion, when I read the thing. I don't know what other people's take on it is. Trustee, oh, trusty Robinson, don't speak as much.
I like that change. That you said, instead of just in violation. Do you violation?
Trustee plus.
I I think it's completely unnecessary. This is. You're 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 saying that this is the violation that they're contending. Of course, any of this would be a contention at this point. We're just, we're just pointing out that this is the provision that. Is being violated, but of course, it's until you go to court or until a judge says something, you're. It's it's unnecessary to say. Uh, that because no one's ruled on it.
I think it should be in there. I see trustee Robinson thinks it probably should be. How about trustee, uh, I'm reserving. Would you?
Yeah, I think we should have it.
Okay, just, yes, I'd say, okay.
I like it as well.
Okay, um, the way it's a change, it would be. Child obtained material comma in and believed to be in, I'm sorry. Oh, I said the word before the word in, so obtained a material believed to be in violation. Just as the words believed to be. And then that's all. And that's my all my my only other input for the people. Trustee, I'm reserving.
Well, I'm just a little concerned that first, the way this is worded, and I could be wrong, but it appears to me that first. The child has to have actually accessed this. Um, inappropriate material or material that may be in violation of Idaho code. Uh, before uh someone, a legal guardian, a parent can actually file a request. Uh, I would think that we would want to allow anybody to file a request at any time.
Uh, I I tend to agree. I believe counsel told me at one point. A person of the public doesn't have to be a parent or guardian. Our policy doesn't say that. I would be happy to say. A uh CLN taxpayer. Uh, because that's everybody who's got their skin in the game. I don't want to open up the entire United States. We could be just. Drowning with people giving us bogus requests just to bog us down, but I would, um. I would, I would like to expand that in there unless there's a reason not to. I'm open to, I don't, I don't want us to hopefully beat this. See the death because it's just, it was just terminology changes to reflect the new two position descriptions, but. Uh, uh, legal counsel.
I'll give you a reason not to. One is we designed this policy solely to catalog requests under eighteen. Uh, fifteen seventeen B, so that way we can identify if we have any exposure here. So. In in my mind, the way this was designed and believe this, uh, Miller asked for fuller helped me with this, was we want to know. All the elements of the statute. And so if it doesn't track those elements, then we're not going to handle it like a statutory relocation. We would handle it more like a. Uh, you know, the traditional reconsideration or relocation as we would as the library did prior to the statute. And so i- in substance, it's not any different than what the library would normally do. Except we hard doubt the duty under the statute for this form. And that's so we can track them separately to make sure we're not missing. A child comes in, gets this material, we don't know about it, it doesn't get forwarded to the director of the department, I don't hear about it. And then the next thing we see is a lawsuit because we missed that six day period. So that that's why we did that.
Trustee plus.
Uh, first, first of all, I uh, I think we had the discussion with legal. I can't find a copy of the form right now, but on the form, it has checkboxes. Are you the parent? Are you the legal guardian? Uh, are you the minor? And. It doesn't say you have to be that, the check it. Anyone can fill the form out and turn it out, turn it in as a request. And this paragraph here says. May be filled out and submitted by a minor or or legal, but. That form is designed to find out what legal wants to know. Are you the parent? Are you the minor? Are you the legal guardian? Did you actually get the material? So they have to answer those questions. But anybody can fill the form out and you don't check those off. So it's a way for the public and and I wanted this, I mean, if you see something, say something. If. Me and the uh, community finds a book, they should be able to turn the form in and they can. They just don't fill out those little checkboxes and. Um, we also put it so that I believe we put it in the on the form or we made it so that if couldn't. It had to be a form turned in, either scanned or turned in, so we didn't have computer bots. Anywhere in the country filling this out. That was the other concern.
So so if I understood correctly, it was, it's written in a tight fashion to respond or in compliance with the statute. It's not to, that's what it's for. So I'm okay with leaving it as it is if that's the case. Uh. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, assistant director.
We have the two processes and two forms and two procedures. Because they are two separate things, then it feels like we're trying to morph them into. One thing, which is just a reconsideration, because the relocation process. Um, has a very specific timeline and is supposed to be only for um, the legal guardians of minors. And that's how we designed our internal process. And if we are wanting to change that, then. We would probably need to change the form and the the policy in itself. Um, but we have a reconsideration process for anyone who wants to turn in anything. And that's the tool they should be using, not the request for relocation.
Hey, so if I got this correct, we've got the new department listed in here, the updates in green. Number things crossed up and red people and the mature content verbiage, verbiage as opposed to the adult access only verbiage. We had two changes believed to be in on page three and also going back to page two, adding the library director. Other changes to this? Trustee plus.
So the reason I voted against this last month is because I wanted. The policy that. Uh, laid out what the mature collection is going to be and we didn't have that policy. Now we're going to discuss it, but I think these are completely intertwined, uh. A policy that uh specifies what this collection is, what goes into it, how it's. Put together, what the rules are to run it. Um. So. We kind of get in, I I I feel this policy should mention the other policy. It should and shouldn't just. There there's a policy saying what what this collection is and we should mention something about as. Uh, specified in, you know, mature collection policy or something. And the second question I got is why is the word content in there? It makes it look like. Why, why isn't it the mature collection? Because. I'm not just concerned about the content, I'm concerned about. How the collection is established. Is it in a room that's closed? Is it uh in all the libraries? Is it um? Monitored, um, all all the things that are in this other policy, I. I don't like the word content because it sounds like we're only talking about what's in the collection. So I would like to change the name to just the mature collection. And have the policy say mature collection poli- or mature collection policy. So that's why I wanted to. Have the two things work together in my discussion or in the discussion last month, but we didn't even talk about it.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Roberts.
Use of why the trustee would want to get rid of the word content. Um. He said. It's. Don't want to be confused with it being the content. So if if. I I think mature content collection is is the, and I did watch the the video of last meeting that I missed and. I know this was discussed. I like that term matured content collection for the reasons that the uh director pointed out why that is a good. Use of words, but I don't understand why you'd want to take content out. And what else it means, I mean, it's the content of the book that. Got it into this room or this special area. I don't understand why you'd want to get rid of the word content.
Mr. Director, have any comments on it?
Uh, well, only to the other point, I mean, so the mature content collection in this policy is all cat, like it's it's title. It's the place the thing is going. So automatically it ties into the policy. So if there was a policy which was the mature content. Collection policy, which we're gonna discuss later, to me, that is the tie in. It automatically ties in because they 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 aren't lowercase words. They're actually, it's the title. So if it says in this policy, um, you know, materials harmful to minors shall be relocated to the mature content collection. You go automatically, you would know that, you would know this, but you would see in your list of policies that there's a mature content collection policy. And then everything governing that. True, but I don't like. I I prefer all the policy kind of work together rather than having it put into. This policy more about mature content collection. It it's probably my librarian and me where I get an index. I I see, I go see something else, right? So I. I see the word mature content collection. If there was a policy governing that, I'd want to go get that policy. I wouldn't necessarily want to. Belabor this one with all that extra data. That's that's why.
Any additional questions?
Yeah.
Trustee plus, uh, trustee plus.
I understand.
Pardon me?
I understand.
Okay. Um, I, I, okay, go ahead.
I I. Think it's a very important, as to this, to actually mention that there's a policy there. But we do that a lot of times. We we say that it's in. Another policy or refer to another policy. So that's why I would like the policy mentioned maybe just once in this first paragraph. That there is such a policy. The reason I don't like the word content is because. The policy shouldn't be just about what goes into that collection. To me, that's what content is referring to. It's what goes in. It's the content of the mature collection. I want a policy name that just says. Mature collection and that policy says how the collection's established, what the parameters are. Is it at every library? Uh, we shouldn't, as the board, should not be telling the staff. Put it in Post Falls, put it in Hayden, don't put it anyplace else. That that's up to them. What I want to do is just say. There's a mature collection. And these books go into it and there's a policy governing it. And we're not just going to talk about the content of the collection. It's. It's how the collection has to be established. I still contend that it could be in a cabinet. It can be in an open shelved area that is well marked. But I I, we need to call that out. In the policy and it's not the content and it's not just what goes into it. It's. A policy about the collection. That's why I'd like to have that word out.
Trustee, your answer?
That's hopefully, uh, if you can hear me, um, I had a question about. Uh, the last green sentence on both pages two and three. Where it says for examination by the collection development department. I'm wondering if after that it should say or board of trustees, because if something is appealed. Then it's supposed to go to the board and we would need copies as well.
Where is this?
In the page two, uh, to the green. If I got it correct, it's the green part, but so we're saying we're not going to remove the material. I mean, may go back and read it again though. This collection is different than the shelf, so.
Well, so the that is covered in the previous set. If the recommendation is to not relocate the material because it is not deemed harmful to minors, the case shall be submitted to the T L N board of trustees for their review. So that's already covered. The last sentence doesn't really talk about any of that. It's just talking about the difference between removal from a shelf and removal from a collection. I don't know if it really um, affects the sentence before it or not. I mean, it basically the collection development department, if ever the collection development department decides that an item that was requested for relocation is not deemed harmful, it automatically bumps to the trustees. So it's already there. The last sentence in green is only about making that distinction between it is more procedural thing of how will the review process take place? Will the librarians have to go to the shelves that stays on the shelf as if the shelf was the most important factor here? Is it removed from the collection so that no one has any access? That would be more like banning. None of that stuff's happening, right? It's just, it's removed from the shelf for review. It's not removed from the collection at all. And that's all that that sentence is referring to.
Can you agree with that, trustee Addison? Trustee, have a say.
Actually, I like what uh, what trustee Addison was saying. I think uh, that we do, I mean, if you if you take a look at it, once once the collection department finishes with their evaluation, whether or not it's being appealed, that's it right there. It could be under this, under the the reading of this, it could be returned to the shelf. So I think that trustee Addison is onto something that by the collections development department and then add or when under appeal, the board of trustees.
Like the director, we read just to come forward that change or I I I again like. It is, it's just, it's just, it's just the location of these two sentences in the paragraph. If you were to put the green sentence above the black sentence. Am I missing that?
No, I'm just making a note that we're again discussing the reconsideration and the relocation policy simultaneously. And those have a separate procedure. I understand the concern about how the the admin staff handles a review for relocation or reconsideration, but there should also be a hefty measure of uh, deference to what the staff wants to do there. So those sentences read slightly differently, ones at the bottom of page two and ones kind of the middle on page three.
Is he, I'm also saying if you're not pulling out, like, you'd like to see it stay as is? Is that your recommendation or you don't?
No, I just think we were kind of talking past each other there. So we have a sentence at the bottom of page two and then the relocation policy on page three. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Trustee plus.
Yeah, I don't think this has any, this part has anything to do with relocation or reconsideration, or this is reconsideration, okay. It doesn't have anything to do with relocation, but the new green sentence in there is basically just an exact repeat of what's down below it. I don't know if we can combine those two, but basically the item in question will not be removed from the collection during the reconsideration process. Except, okay, the second sentence talks about the shelf. So that's, okay, now I see what you're saying. Can we move? I guess move the board, move move this part above the part about the board.
What's this part?
We talked about the board's decision is final. Anyway, the board's decision, board reviewing is part of the reconsideration process. I do, I I think this applies to the board without having to say it again.
Yeah. You might cover all this is, if it's going to the board, it's still in the reconsideration process. I mean, we don't need to change it. Oh, trustee Addison, please.
Uh, yeah, if it's, if it just unnecessarily complicates things and we're already covered, then I don't want it.
Good. I would entertain a motion to approve this policy with the two changes that we made. And but the greens and the red, they were marked already when we sat down here. Anybody have any other questions or issues before we do this? Trustee plus.
So apparently no one is uh, interested in what I said, or are you glossing over it?
It's going to stop all of our policies. So maybe.
Mention mentioning another, I'd like to have a motion if you want to do that to mention another policy.
Make a motion, a top by motion, you can amend a motion.
You haven't made the motion yet. You asked for.
Entertaining a motion.
But I'm at, I'm making a motion.
Change this policy with the green and red markings as they were presented. And the two pending changes that the group has collectively agreed to.
But I'm giving you a different motion, so you don't have a motion yet.
Okay.
The motion I'm making is to mention the name of the policy when we approve it. And to remove the word content, just mature collection.
So if you repeat the exact motion you're making, I'll present it to the floor.
On the first paragraph, under the harm, materials harmful to minors on the first page, page one. Add at the end the name of the policy, comma, mature collection policy, or whatever we end up calling it. I don't, we haven't discussed.
The motion, I can't.
Okay.
What is the motion?
The motion is to add at the end of that sentence, comma. Mature collection, the mature collection policy.
End of what sentence? I'm sorry.
The first paragraph, under the materials harmful to minor on page one.
So the very top?
No. The materials harmful to minor section, which is the next to the last paragraph on that page. Comma, after the green, comma. Uh, mature collection, the mature collection policy.
Can you read your proposed full sentence now? I don't, I don't follow.
I don't know what there is to follow. After. I'll leave the word content in if we want, but it after the green, mature content collection.
Can you start from the
Yeah.
Right there, start from the sentence.
Material, okay, if you want to do that. Materials harmful to minors shall be relocated to the mature content collection, comma.
In accordance with?
Per the, yeah, I should say per something, per the mature content collection policy.
Oh, refer again to the director. Do you see any issues with adding that in there?
Uh, well, uh, yeah, um, not really. I mean, there was a couple, another policy that we looked at in the packet and at the bottom of it, it might have been a practice here at the C L N, was to like say, see all known, and it lists us like four or five other policies. Like, so that could be worked around where we're just at the end of this one, you guys see all film. But um, it, I'm more concerned about the wording, the mature content collection, I think is the best wording for the collection. I know I've done this a couple of times, but there's a difference between like you capitalize labels, which is the name of the thing, and then just, just adjectives and stuff. So it's not a mature collection. It's the mature content collection because the word, the phrase mature content is a phrase in in the language. It's mature content. Collection. It's not the mature collection. That was a different message, I think, than the mature content collection. So I would like to keep mature content collection as the name of a thing, a special collection. Um, whether we refer to the policy, yeah, that doesn't matter in any meaning.
Okay, I don't know if the naked is running through its approval. Do we want to just do a consensus when the motion that was just made? Trustee Addison, trustee Addison, go ahead, please.
Uh, yeah, I was just going to say that if it's not necessary to change it, I'd rather just for the ease of getting through it, just leave it as is.
Sounds easier to get it sort of in there. I don't know. I want to pass this and get done. No, okay. We have consensus on changing this sentence. The sentence reads with the change, materials harmful to minors shall be relocated to mature content collection, comma, per the mature collection policy. I got that correct? Is, does the people, do people want that in there? Trustee Robbins?
Is the mature, oh, wait, what's the last, what's the last policy that you?
For the mature collection policy.
And where is the mature?
That's, that's on our packet farther back.
Has that been approved?
No, that's up for discussion.
So I, how can we put that? Have we approved this?
It's a good point.
With something in it that isn't approved?
We should have done this first.
Okay, well, so.
I suggest just leave it out. Let's just leave it out in my opinion.
All right, then, um, do we have consensus on adding it? I, I'll, no. Anybody?
I vote yes.
You vote yes?
I don't, I think.
Leave it in there?
No.
So trustee Addison? No? Okay, therefore it's not going in there. I want to take a motion to approve the materials withdrawal and reconsideration policy distributed, distributed with the corrections and changes that are in red and green and the two pending changes made at this, thinking just yet. It's been only been acquired.
Go ahead, Captain. Is the motion to approve and then implement and then force the policy, is it proven said for review, believe it?
Oh, I thought it was already was.
It already was, legal, right? That's why we have it.
I thought it was just, uh, well, I'd rather go on the safe side and how do we word that if it's just going to be approved and forward for legal? That we would.
We did that last time.
Well, we did last time. This is actually an effect, but it's got some changes in it. If counsel doesn't mind responding to you, do you need to run this past your office if you do? Change my wording.
It wasn't in the packet. That was tasked for me to review for this meeting, but I reviewed it anyway. In the first paragraph, materials are defined in the material selection acquisition policy. It's not correct material is defined. And we don't have a plausible and singular phrase in our interpretation for our policies. That would be technically incorrect. The second one is under materials harmful to minors, where we take reasonable steps to restrict access to minors to material defined in four separate sections of code. Two of those sections of code contain no definitions and only penalized conduct. On the second page, um, we send the evaluation to the board after the collection development department looks at a relocation request or reconsideration request, I apologize. But like in the Arkansas case, um, the board is only tasked with evaluating whether the collection development department appropriately used the material selection and acquisition policy as a guide during the review process. And the board is not actually tasked with reviewing the book nor is it required to review the book. And then the third page where we talk about using the Miller or Pico case, I just, we're going to go over this later when we talk about our our other policies. But I think after the the Yano County case and listening to the um, the oral arguments, there was two sets of them, right? The first time and then they're going in front of the Imba Court, which means the full Fifth Circuit may go with the dissent in that first Fifth Circuit uh, panel majority opinion. And in that case, they fall uh, into question whether or not the form analysis or the free speech clause is going to apply to the selection or acquisition at all. Um, it was a skating descent. And then you look at the PETA case out of D C, which has been there since two thousand and five. And they hold that the shelving materials are government speech, which means we don't even go through a free speech clause analysis at all. And so I think if the library, um, and obviously I recommend that we wait for the controversy so we're not caught up in it. But if the library is going to take a position that the Miller and the Pico case applies to our selection and our removal process, we're actually cutting against our position that the latest Supreme Court case on this, the ALA case out of two thousand and three, that analogizes the internet to the books. Um, and very strongly suggests that the free speech clause is an applied selection and removal. It cuts across and against our reasoning. And so those would be my comments. If this was going to be sent to legal for review, if it's not, I wanted to get those on the record for your consideration then.
So what I'm hearing is we probably could approve this pending legal review. That be accurate by the staff board here? Trustee plus.
Well, we just got a legal review and it and you kind of rattled it off. I was too many, I'm pretty confused what you said about the Pico case and what the most recent. The reason we put the Pico case in here was so that the board, it's not realistic that five people on the board are going to read the entire book. If there's multiple books cover to cover. The, do the Miller case, the P, the Pico case is newer and it gave us the option to look for specific uh, parts of the book. That's why that's in there. And I thought we already had a legal review and we already went through this and it was okay, but it, I don't know whether you're saying it's okay or it's not okay.
What I'm saying is we don't know and we don't have a specifically on point Ninth Circuit case to guide us. And we have a circuit split with the D C court and the Fifth Circuit. Fifth Circuit likely coming down one way. We're waiting for their on bond review decision. And then the Eighth Circuit rental case, which was barely mentioned at all in the Arkansas case in a footnote. But it's going to come down to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court we have now, who's uh, in Shurtlift, we haven't talked about Shurtlift yet, which is a much newer case. So all the stuff we're reviewing is prior to uh, ALA in two thousand and three. Prior to Shurtlift, which talks about how the Supreme Court is going to determine whether or not something is government speech or not. And there's a very strong debate regarding whether or not the shelves of the library and the collection decisions the director makes constitute government speech. And it falls right in the middle almost of the three factors. And so there really is no way to predict where it's going to fall. And so what I would craft and recommend and propose as a, as a technical legal matter is that we try and satisfy to the maximum extent both. So that way we foreclose any potential legal challenge or at least have a very strong basis that we're you know, attempting to follow both sets of rules. And so my point simply on the Pico case is that ALA doesn't doesn't really make sense with the Miller and the Pico test now that we have Shurtlift and the circuit split. And so if the library wants to take a position that it's selection and removal decisions, which under the government speech test collapse into one, and there's no distinction, are government speech, the free speech clause analysis doesn't apply. It doesn't mean we can go out and be, have a discriminatory unanimous and make viewpoint content based discrimination uh, discrimination with specificity, but it means that we have very extremely broad discretion to do just that. As long as it follows library and professional science standards. But if we're going to adopt the position that the obscenity or the obscenity life test or the Pico case or the Miller lies, then we have to deal with all the issues related to um, the rights to receive information, which came out of a private case, not a public case. Um, and the different intricacies of this free free speech clause, which haven't worked out, like what age level does it apply to? Because I was lost as all minors, but then there's any minor. And so are we supposed to be looking at only what's obscene as to all minors or is it what's obscene as to any minors? And then how does the library grow up with that when it creates its collection? So I know it's very confusing. But this could not be potentially consistent with the library's position. I think the library's uh, policy position is critical on any potential future dispute if we're going to be in front of a court. Because they're going to look at every meeting and they're going to use A I and they're going to transcribe everything we've said. And they're going to try and mischaracterize it. That's what I would do if I was suing us. And then they'll try to cast a specific light on the motivations behind our decisions. And so we, we want to be able to argue, here's what we did and here's why we did it. And we, we don't want to go into a court and say, Judge, we were using the Pico test, but it's government speech, so the free speech clause doesn't apply. Does that make sense?
Yeah, my motivation is to protect minors. Uh, this policy is already in effect. This is not random, just in case, I I know it was, it was sprung on you. This is, this was signed up. This is in effect on June already. Strictly was being updated with terminology or few things in here to do with a new department. So since it didn't get run by counsel yet, I'm okay with potentially and hopefully entertaining a motion to approve it pending legal review. I'm okay with potentially and hopefully entertaining a motion to approve it pending legal review. Now trustee plus.
I move that we approve this policy to go in effect. Today with the two changes that are in it. It's already in effect, so. We've got a legal review, let's just update it with the two changes.
Just see him reset.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned about what, uh, counsel oils saying about this Pico case test. Is that really necessary to be in there? It is? I, I don't understand that.
Neither do I.
Miller case, which is what ALA pounds and pounds says it has to be. Uh, when taken as a whole. It has to have, be shown as a problem. So that means you've got to read the entire book, page to page, and if twenty-five out of twenty-six chapters have something in it. But when taken as a whole, it's still got literary or cultural or. Religious or artistic or scientific value, whatever, basically that, that applies to me, applies to nonfiction. I don't think it really applies to fiction. But if it's got a value, even if twenty-five out of twenty-six chapters have something objectionable, we have to leave it. We can't remove it, and that, that applies with removing it from the library. Eagle case allowed you to look at. A section of the book. And they said it could be if it's. Pervasively vulgar and the analogy is like a skunk on the crawl space. Is pervasively ruins the whole house. So Pico is newer, Pico, we can look at a section. And if it ruins, if it's pervasively vulgar, that's why I understood it. And I think as trustees, if we get the book and five of us are supposed to read it cover to cover. And we're forced to do the Miller test and give our reasons. We're going to go nowhere with reviewing books. Pico case is simpler, that's why it's there.
I'm not a lawyer. So both obscenity motions, does the board want to, go ahead, uh, I mean, I'll make an actual motion or someone else can. Do we want to approve this tentatively and, and ending legal review? Is that we wanted?
You made a motion.
Trustee Robinson, you haven't spoken in a while.
Got a motion on the table.
Yeah, we have two of you.
So I guess what I'm confused since order approved six seventeen twenty twenty-four. Was this looked at by counsel then?
I think we beat that one to death for months and months and months. Yeah, trusty boss knows the answer for sure. There's your answer. Trustee Robinson.
And of course, that doesn't mean something has changed meanwhile, um, with the attorney's opinion. If this was looked at. On six seven or before it was approved six seventeen twenty-four. Uh, and something, some new. Information came up to the attorney that has made him change his mind on this not being a hundred percent right. Then I think we should probably listen to him. But we already, I, but if we're going off of this policy right now, I mean. And we're just approving this, the new words, so I don't. I, I'm really confused on what we're supposed to do with this if we're actually using this right now and we're also being told it's not a hundred percent kosher.
Yeah, when I look at it, I see changes in there that are also not strictly. Change the name of library director to, I think, whatever the other, to new title is that mature content, oh, sorry. For the department, the collection development department, so. I, I think there were enough concerns just now raised by counsel. I don't necessarily feel comfortable leaving ahead as much as I'd like to just approve this. But, uh, there was a motion on the floor, I don't remember what it was, trustee plus, go ahead.
The motion is to approve. The policy with the two changes effective today. And we can still bring it back up, you know, later and review it again if some changes. Anyway, the most, the motion on the table is approve it. Effective today with the two changes.
Sure.
I think what trustee plus is saying is, is probably the way we should go, and here's the reason. Yeah, and this law was signed in, in April, and I mean, it wasn't signed, but it was passed in April and then it was. Uh, made into launch first of July and, and four months. It's time to do something about this. Get those things out and have something that we can use by our P F two. And so if we do need to then, um, have. I, I, I would say that we should go ahead, exactly what trustee plus is saying, is get this thing. Through today for immediate use, but at the same time. Take any suggestions from counsel oils and, uh, use those for another revision. Within the next, uh, couple of months.
Anybody else have comments on it? All right, oh, trustee Robinson.
Could the attorney give an opinion on that? What was just said by trustee. And Mercedes.
Only the chances they could involve with it, but they.
Sure, I, I, the question was that I'm hearing is. Why did we previously approve this and why am I questioning it now? And I'll tell you exactly why, because the Yano County case, we've blacked. Whatever, the Yano County case was out. Um, ten days before or something like that, Judge Pittman, you know, they issued their ruling, they went up to the Fifth Circuit and it was a two, one split. And we read it, we, we were comfortable with it, it's the law, and so we're predicting what the law is. But in September, uh, they had oral arguments because the Fifth Circuit decided to take it up in-bank. Which means that enough of the justices didn't like the Fifth Circuit panel opinion to rehear it. Have new oral arguments that have like ten or all of the justices participate. And the on-bank opinions are like the strongest opinions in a circuit because it represents sort of the circuit as a whole, not just three random judges that hear it. And listening to the, the, the appellate court judges questioning, um. Led me to believe that there's a, a high probability that they may fall on the side of the dissent in the original panel opinion. And the dissent was a scathing, um. View on sort of the form analysis applying to selection of the materials. And then if you look at the DC case that's out and the Eighth Circuit, so now you have the Fifth Circuit and the DC case. On one side of it and the Eighth Circuit on the other side, and that creates the split. And so I think this will be going up to the Supreme Court very soon. So for me, not having an on-point case in the Ninth Circuit maximizes our likelihood of being caught up in litigation, it doesn't minimize our likelihood. And then we have a private case filed in Idaho challenging the law, but it's all private plaintiffs, not public plaintiffs. Um, and then. The recently expressed sentiment of some of the trustees related to wanting to exercise a discretionary function in a vigorous manner. Which would require a government speech doctrine defense, not a Miller or Pico case defense. So we don't want to argue free speech clause if what we're doing really is government speech. And so that's why I'm bringing this up now. Plus, how the courts are scrutinizing how the review is actually going to occur. And then the specific policy, um, kind of meeting the same test where they could say, oh, look, the board isn't even required, maybe they do read the book, maybe they don't. But now that we're saying we're not going to read the book on the review, we're going to be falling right into where the Arkansas cases. And so that's why I was saying, hey, maybe we'll just clean some of this up, make it very clear. And try and navigate both avenues, the free speech avenue, the government speech avenue to the maximum extent that we can.
Trustee Anderson, go ahead.
Uh, I was just going to say that, uh, perhaps we should wait. Um, until the director is ready to bring this back to us. Is that what he would like?
Well, I would expect people to defer to me if I was going to talk about the library profession. So I'm going to defer to counsel, I mean, I've heard enough here that, I mean, I'm said. When he mentioned everything in this policy that he wanted to review, it was none of the green text. It was all stuff that is currently there, so this really follows back to the trustees to simply. Deal with whether it's different now or not, but again, bottom line is I'm here to be the library director. And I want to do this library science stuff, which I've been educated in, um, I'll do whatever the law tells me to do. So I defer to the lawyer. And I'm just wondering whether we have to sit on this for years and years for the courts to play out and do nothing. I don't know, that's my concern right now, or, or do you think we could actually? Clean this up and get it out of here in the next couple of months?
No.
No, that's. Hey, trustee plus, go ahead.
Uh, one, one question, you, the legal, you said Yano, is that the same as Lono County in Texas? Is that what? Any, because that's the one that said libraries are afforded great discretion for their selection and acquisition decisions. That's the one, that's why we split into two policies. So the, the other is, I, I want us to have a policy in effect right now, I don't want this. Uh, you know, if, if there's a reason, if it goes to Supreme Court in six months or a year and there's a reason to change it, then let's do it then. But let's get something in effect right now, that's why I promote my motion.
Steve Robinson.
So in a way, if we, um, voted on this motion and approved the changes. Or if we didn't approve the changes, either way, we still have this existing document. That I assume we're going to want to send to the attorney. Because of the new things that the attorney was telling us about it. Uh, so we, we have to have this. We have to have this active, whether we change. The, you know, add the green to it or not, isn't that correct?
Yeah, I figured we're going to go, we're grossly behind on time, I know that much. I would like to get something in effect because the terminology is obsolete if we approve. The other policies that have already gone through a lot, legal review. So I'm planning to just say go bold or go home maybe and just vote on it and say yes and move on and like. But I'm also open to any other comments before we go ahead, trustee plus.
Couple of the comments that the legal made about materials shouldn't be plural and. I look at the policy name is materials selection, it is plural. I think we're in a, in, in agreement with, or the policy is in agreement with the, the name of it.
Was that motion, I'm sorry.
But I'm saying the concerns really boil down to this. This concern about the legal cases, I didn't hear that much else, so I still, uh, think we should vote on the policy. Or vote on.
Any other comments before we take a vote? It has been moved to approve the materials withdrawal reconsideration policy distributed to the board. With the, there was just two parenting changes and the changing the crossing out the red and adding in the green. Has distributed. Follows to the paper, go die. Die.
Die.
They're approved. Say that anyway. Has been accepted, approved. Okay, okay, make a note of that, thank you. Finished, next item, trustee training.
Hey, we have a real quick, uh, two minute, uh, restroom.
I think we can move, if there's people want it, we can change the break time now and then come back and reconvene.
Counselor said it, but it's got to be short.
Uh, okay, so we'll take a ten, oh, you want to do training first?
It'll be short.
You okay with that, trustee Emmerich? Okay, train.
Okay, thank you, um, you'll, you recall last time we discussed discrimination employment and what constitutes good cause. And especially in terms of the public employment context. Today I provided you with a partial printout of the Community Library Network's personal policy manual, their personal manual. That governs, um, how the director and the board interacts with the employees and each other. So on the first page, you'll notice under the purpose, here is the district's commitment. Um, and it says the procedures for investigating and resolving internal complaints of harassment. The next highlight is that it applies to all terms and conditions of employment. And if you go under responsibilities under four point three, the director is responsible for following the complaint procedure set out in the policy. And then managers, coordinators and administrators also have enforcement requirement there in four point three, one and two. And if you look at four point three, one or two A. Um, if a manager observes some type of unlawful discrimination or harassment or retaliation, they need to take immediate action to address the problem. That could be speaking directly with the affected person, developing a specific account of actions, omissions, occurrences, consulting with the director, et cetera. Um, and then also support, uh, for. Pass that on to a supervisor or the director depending on your chain of command. You take it to the next page, eight, under B, unlawful harassment. If it's reported or alleged, it must be investigated. And then no complaining party is allowed to retract the allegation without proving it was made irredeemably. Later in the policy, it, it states that as well under the complaint procedure. Um, if you move to four point five, this is the complaint procedure. And this is what the director will follow. Of note in this are some specific provisions related to if there is a trustee complaint. If it's regarding the chair, then it needs to go to vice chair to be handled. Likewise, regarding the director, it needs to go to the assistant director. And then they'll get with legal and determine how to proceed next steps. Confidentiality is really important in this process during the investigation, some limited, um. Disclosure of information is necessary, but all of the employees and the trustees likewise should maintain confidentiality to the maximum. Extent possible, if you have a question about what to do, um, don't email another trustee, that probably discoverable. Staff shouldn't email another staff member, that would likely be discoverable. Um, feel free to give counsel a call and remember that, uh, communications aren't privileged. If you're not seeking legal advice and a lawyer is party to the conversation. And so you want to maintain sort of strict protocol there when you do communication. Uh, some of those early, uh, discussions are some of the best evidence to use against an entity. Um, and then the last thing I would note is that. Um, unless the complaint involves a trustee, typically the board is not going to be involved at all. At least until maybe very, very late in the process. And so while most of this does apply to the district, I just wanted to remind all the board members that. It's not their role to be involved in sort of, uh, discipline or complaints related to staff members. That all of that should run through the director and then if necessary, we will loop the board in. So if the board receives a complaint and it's not related to another trustee, then I would immediately refer that to the director. Any questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I suggest we take a break, let's break it down to an eight minute break, so whatever eight minutes and now is, we can make up two minutes of our overtime. So eight minutes now we're reconvening. This meeting is called back to order. The next item on the agenda, we're about thirty minutes, thirty-five minutes behind schedule by the way, so. If any of these things along here, we can save time, that's great. Item number eleven is, uh, eighteen fifteen seventeen B, discussion of legal reviews of policy packet. Um, so I don't know if we're just looking at taking the policy packet that was given to us. And approving it as a whole, meaning instead of as individual policies or not. And I'm assuming maybe trustee, um, Austin can tell me, have he's gone through legal review because legal review stepped out? Counsel, did you, there's a bunch of policies here, it says, uh, they, they went through legal review, I'm assuming, children in the library. Tools of conduct, so forth. This one, they were part of this package.
Yeah, I got children in the library.
Yes.
Tools of conduct, library cards for minors, material selection and acquisition policy. Request for relocations of material.
Okay, so if there were, if it went through your office, have the changes been incorporated in this? Or I'm just kind of curious where we are, so I don't know how to start.
No, those were the titles of the policy package that were sent to me for review.
That's why I'm asking, they've been reviewed and if there were issues. They've been reviewed and if there were issues, are they, are they noted already or they changed in here or, just so I know where we are. Uh, or can I assume it means you were okay with what was presented to your office?
I think this is the policy that was promulgated for review that's in the board packet today.
Okay, I've got four, three or four would be got here, policies. The item reading is asked on.
Legal review.
I'm assuming it means that you already reviewed them.
Yeah, those are the same one.
Okay, okay. So, so if there are issues, they've been noted already, meaning, or you're okay with what was presented to your office? I don't understand how to get started on this. I don't think.
These policies do not reflect a review. These are the policies that were promulgated last board meeting, been no changes.
But they have, they gone through legal review?
I did review the policy.
Okay. And there were no issues noted, is that right? So?
I have several comments to make if I'm given the opportunity. I didn't amend the document.
Yes, okay, very good. Um, you don't mind, I'll take it over to you. Uh, I'll take the first one, children in the library. If you have legal issues or things that bring up on that, appreciate it.
So I, I didn't have any amendments to the children in the library policy.
Okay. So I guess there's an open now. I have one comment on it, a very small, one word. In the very opening paragraph, the last sentence, it says a community library network does not act in loco parentis. Um, okay, sorry, last sentence, parents and legal guardians are, I would like to add, ultimately responsible for minor children's access. Uh, I think it, it, uh, just an opinion, I think I put it in one other, uh, one of these other ones that mentioned it, but what people liked me to add, parents and legal guardians are ultimately responsible for their minor children's access to the community library network. Or we can leave it out of there. Um, no? No? Leave it out. Okay. It's staying out. I have no other notes on this policy, my own, so if anybody got that many comments or concerns, questions on children in the library policy? Okay, well, assume that's gonna fly. I, I, we can, vote on all three of these or what have we got? Oh, trustee boss.
Can, can we just approve them one at a time?
I can, yeah.
I, I move that we approve children in the library policy as presented.
It has been moved to approve the children in the library policy provided to the board. All those, oh, any other further concern, discussion? No. Hey, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Any ayes have it?
Approved.
Next policy was rules of conduct. I'd like to know if council had any concerns with that policy?
Uh, other than the reference under three ten to the mature content collection, that one was not provided at the time the rest of the policy packet was provided. And so I noted that depending on whether we adopted what it says, if we adopted this policy, we have kind of a gap for a whole there. Other than that, the rules of conduct appear to be fine. There wasn't significant changes to them.
And I only had two miniature ones on page two, paragraph two, and number six, I think I wrote it last time. I don't think there should be a period at the end of that, they're just bullets. The other ones don't have periods.
Number seven does.
And number seven shouldn't have one as well, I don't think. I have both of those noted.
What was eleven under one?
So number six and number seven skipped a period at the end of the line.
And number eleven, out of the one.
Oh, that noted as well, thank you. Um, and on paragraph one, on the, on page two, item number eleven, there's a period at the end of the line there. If that's out of sentence. Anybody, do we have any changes?
Two A, there's that.
Two A.
And number one.
Number one. Two, oh. Yeah, I think that's potential. Yes, obviously, I, I would agree to delete that as well. Anybody have those in that idea? Done. Okay. Hey, go ahead trustee boss.
On, uh, on the, on page three, uh, at the bottom, there's an asterisk with notes and I don't know why we can't include the policy that we're gonna pass in this instead of just saying we've established a collection. So I would like to add at the end per, per the mature collection policy.
Be more exacting what you're asking?
I would like to add at the end of that sentence where it says the collection is only accessible, well, actually it should be, uh, before that sentence. Says library network has established a mature collection, content collection, I would put comma, per the mature content collection policy, to make it clear there's a policy. Then a period, so we'd just be inserting, per the mature content collection policy.
I'm not necessarily opposed to that. Anybody okay, are they okay with that? Okay, anybody else have any other changes or input trustee Robinson?
Do we have a mature content policy?
We have a pending one coming up.
Then, then I just don't feel like it should be in there if we don't have one.
I'll set this aside and you guys should do this.
Right.
Okay, trustee Robinson, thanks for seeing her.
Um, again, if it's not necessary to change it, I don't think we should, um, because that might change other things that have already gone through legal review. It might not be a good idea. We, we normally don't change anything unless, um, at, at this point, we don't change things unless legal suggests them, usually.
I can live with it. Robinson, would you like not to add it? Okay. I'll, I'll agree, not to add it, just, I wanna get done. I, I, I get, we're at meetings to get things done, I wanna get things done. So, um, does trustee Robinson want to leave it in or pick it out? I, I just, you wanna add that extra terminology that trustee boss just presented?
Uh, I'd like to just leave it as it was presented to us in the packet.
Trustee Robinson?
I'm doing with, uh, leaving it out.
Leaving it out, okay, so we're not adding any, any other change that, or no, no changes so far, we see.
We have the time to continue. We're moving periods.
I've been deleting some periods in there. I see no other changes trustee boss.
I move that we approve rules of conduct policy as presented with the, except for the one, two, three, four, there's four periods to remove, or removal of the periods.
It has been moved to accept or approve the rules of conduct policy with removal of several periods. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Thanks. Next one I have up on here is library cards for minors policy. I'll jump first since I'm on here. I didn't see a need for the word at, in paragraph four, A and B both have the title called unlimited, I'm sorry, limited access card for minors. I don't see value to the word for minors. And the same thing with general access card for minors. Um, I just think it could be a limited access card and a general access card. We talked about for minors in the rest of the discussion there, but I don't think it's necessary. Think of it with or without. Anybody else have comments on this?
I, I would just leave them because this is talking about minors. So if that's the name of the card, limited access card for minors, I don't think you want to change the name of the card.
Trustee Robinson?
I'm fine with that change as well, especially on the, on B, because I think it's, uh, more important there because otherwise there's general access cards that aren't for minors. But, uh, so this is going from having three different options for minors to two different options for minors. So I'm just wondering if we approved it, what's the timeframe on three catalogs, uh, cataloging and, and everything that goes into that, uh, for the staff?
Uh, I can respond to part of that. I, I'm sitting around a table here, there, what's not on the policy drafted in front of us is the implementation schedule. Because this is a big, this is a biggie here, in my opinion, but we're, we have no way of knowing how many minors have in their possession right now an open access card, an adult card. And if we don't create, in my opinion, implementation schedule, it's going to take two years for all those cards to come in and go through a renewal process and to validate that a person's actually an adult. So I'll read off what I have as a proposed add-on, another paragraph, implementation schedule, no later than, I put blank, I don't know what date. All adult level, i.e. open access library cards will automatically default to general access cards following the board approval of this policy. All cards currently designated as limited access will retain that status, that's the lower one in the minors. So if somebody already took that lowest minors card, uh, they can keep that status because the parents already took action. So all cards currently designated as limited access will retain that status until the initial implementation of this change, but may be upgraded to a general access card by parents or legal guardians if desired. Proof of adult status must be presented to upgrade any cards to the open access card level. And then I put a note at the bottom, which I already mentioned, that the rationale for this process is to shorten the implementation schedule in order to be in compliance with Idaho statutes eighteen thirteen, eighteen fifteen thirteen to eighteen fifteen seventeen B. Otherwise, again, it would take two years for all the CLN cards to go for renewal and age verification. And, and then I threw out, okay, this is a big deal, people have cards, uh, there has to be some type of a major notification process. And I suggested whether it's emails, websites, press release, social media, signage, mailings, et cetera, trustee boss, yes.
So this was part of the request you had that we voted against, but to not line out the cards for minors or for minors, I think if that's the name of the card, limited access card for minor, we should have the name, the general access card, I don't want to confuse it with an adult general access card. I should have the name, general access card for minors. So I would unstrike those words. Um, what I don't understand is why we can't just turn off existing minor cards? Why do they, why do we have to go to trouble of making them general access cards? Because why can't they just be turned off and they have to reapply? Seems like turning all of them into general access cards is gonna be a burden for IT or somebody is trying to deal with these cards that are being used remotely, maybe without coming into the library. We don't want the minors to be able to get material from non-CLN libraries because they don't have the Idaho law. Um, I said just turn them off and they have to reapply.
Let me get the director's report. The majority of the library cards held are open access cards. We don't know those persons that have those open access cards, we don't know which ones are minors or adults. So what I'm proposing is to say anyone who has an open access card, the adult level card, all those cards, route, uh, IT, default, all those cards back to a general access card, which is, which is the, oh, actually, I should, general access card for minors, because we didn't strike that language out of there. So all cards in the library default to the general access card for minors, which is the highest level minors card there is out there. If the system already has someone who has a lower level card, even a limited access card for minors, they keep that. The parents already took the initiative to, um, get that card for their child, so we shouldn't upgrade it. And so if, if that makes sense, I'm, I'm trying to, so a general access card for minors is not an open access card. So most of the people in the CLN that hold cards have an open access card. It's gonna take too long, so I'm, I mean, that's, if that helps explain, I'm not saying you have to live with my terminology in this, in this draft thing I held out, but, uh, that makes sense to people. Any questions? Other people want to talk? The director, please.
Uh, I would, I would just assume that as soon as, as soon as this policy was approved, then it would be the procedural responsibility of the director to make it take effect. Discussion of how that's gonna take effect is really gonna be dependent on the ILS and what its capabilities are. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not as familiar with the ILS yet as some of my IT guys will be, but, um, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to know exactly who has what card, because that's what the ILS is all about, we know who has all cards and we can search by various fields. So, uh, all I would need from the board is just implement this immediately or begin immediately and then I would begin. So I don't know how much of an implementation schedule is policy-based versus just, this is the new policy, you know, it takes effect right away and then the onus would be on the director to implement it right away. And then I might have to come back next month to report on, you know, how it was implemented and now it's exciting, we managed to give X number percent because of how the ILS worked. But again, I, I don't know whether I would necessarily need an implementation schedule to make something take effect as soon as it being approved.
Now, I extend that as it might, or the assistant director have as no of the answer. Does the ILS have the age of all of each cardholder? My guess is it doesn't, but do we, do we, is that, is that in there? Because if it's not in there, then there's no way to, to do it dataually, we're gonna look at ages if it's not in the system.
Or individuals that are under eighteen, it has the, individuals over eighteen, it does not.
So if they're under eighteen and they have an open access card, does the system know that? So, okay. All right.
That, that's, I guess, what I thought you were saying here. I didn't realize you were talking about adults also, but if we know they're eight, under eighteen and they have an open access card, turn it off. They have to, instead of defaulting it to something, just turn it off, they have to come re-register and get the card they want. Basically turn off all minors cards is what I think and just restart them.
Anybody else has input? I would say if anybody has a minors card that gives them open access, shut that down to a lower level. No need to kill it, but, uh, council?
Thank you, chair. Um, you know, I like this policy from a legal perspective. Overall, except it troubles me that we're going to not have the data associated with how many minors have current access to library materials that won't if we turn them off. And so we mentioned in loco parentis throughout this policy. We don't, we're acting loco parentis, we're not responsible for your children, we, we're not babysitters. You're, you're deemed to accompany your minor when you get this policy. And so I would just like to say maybe we want to hit pause on not including the third category, the minors cards, which is an unrestricted minor card. Because what you're saying is if a parent wants their child to have an unrestricted minor card and they agree to accompany their minor to the mature collection and they agree to police what streaming content that they're gonna allow their minors to access, I don't think it's gonna be a legal, a sufficient legal justification in a court to say, well, we don't trust the parent to police streaming content offsite. That's not something we could consider. So what we really need to do is focus what these categories mean and what we're really saying. And so I think there's going to be a class of individuals. And so I think there's going to be a class of individuals, current minors, that have a card that allows them to access streaming content. Is that correct, Mr. Walters? So we currently have minors with unrestricted access to library materials. Is that correct?
I believe the number is eight thousand nine hundred and six.
Eight thousand nine hundred and six minors with open access cards. And so I could just predict with eighty-five point nineteen percent certainty that out of those almost nine thousand minors, which reflects, well, I'm not going to speculate on those, but nine thousand minors that tomorrow won't have access to streaming content, it's going to create a ruffle and that might be just enough to pull us into litigation. And so what I would suggest is that we maybe take one more look at the three categories of minor cards we have and try and go.
We have two in this policy.
Well, we'll have two and we'll be removing the general. So I'm looking at theoretically that we have a third category, right? And so we put some pen and paper together and see what, you know, what this circulation information reflects on these categories of minors. Because like the ALA case, the eBooks and the streaming content, the online databases, the court allowed the libraries to essentially censure a large majority of constitutionally protected material under the E-Rate program. And so they said, hey, look, here's the string that's attached to the money you're going to get to put that Wi-Fi network in your library. And we know this filtering service is going to loop in some constitutionally protected content. But that's okay because of the practical situation in that case. And the Supreme Court two thousand and three said that the internet was an extension of a book. And so I think that same analysis applies here. And we need to very seriously consider how this library cards for minors policy that will potentially immediately change eight thousand nine hundred and six minors' access to content. And I don't think we have our heads wrapped around the impact that that could potentially create.
Trustee Plas?
So we have the Idaho law. And the Idaho law makes it very clear, CLN is at legal risk. We can be sued for two hundred dollars plus legal fees if a minor, which is under eighteen, not this progressive scale, under eighteen, gets access to this material. And we have defined it in our policies as online, you know, all the different stuff we've got in our definitions. But I think we got a totally legal basis. We're at risk if we let them have it. So, you know, Mr. Supreme Court Justice needs to consider that. The Idaho has got us, we have a legal liability if we allow it. So we have to end it. We have to end that access that should have never been given, in my opinion. But under eighteen, we just have to end those cards. And, you know, I don't know whether we can default to the legislature if we get taken to court, but we're just implementing what the legislature has told us to do. And we're not doing it, honestly, it's because we have liability over us.
If we don't, if we don't default, the minors holding an open access card, then that means the minors can continue to go onto the CIN and get materials from just about anywhere that might violate our own policies. So that's what I'm struggling with right now, saying, well, I always hire and sit in this chair and say, I'm going to protect minors and therefore I'm not going to let minors have access to anywhere, including Washington State, including other libraries in Idaho that may not be as conservative as we are. And I don't know how else to restrict that. I don't know, we're not keeping minors out of the general collection. Minors can still go into the general, as long as their parents are okay with that. Minors can have access and check out books basically from anywhere in the library with the exception of the mature content section. So I'm not sure I understand what we're depriving minors of and excluding or selling legally to. I say that, again, if we have minor cards for minors, which we do, we have a limited card, we have the general access card, and we had an open access card. In our current draft, we no longer have an open access card for minors. And if we don't, then why are we going to have minors out there walking around with open access cards? That seems to be contrary to what we're putting forth here in this particular draft. I'm open to other discussions and comments and questions on it. But that was my best take on it, is I think we have to put some kind of a timeline on this thing when we do it. And director?
I think my assistant wants to speak to a few children first, off the couch.
The way I understand this is that the board is voting on this policy. The board has said what they want to do. But what I would ask is that you let the director and the assistant director formulate a plan, report back to the board next month what our plan is going to look like. We need to have a very smooth, like, communications campaign because we are removing CIN access for eighty-nine hundred patrons. And that's something that they're going to be very upset about. And our staff are going to face a lot of ivory customers. So we need to be able to train our staff. We need to be able to tell the community. And we need to be cohesive and be a team. And I would ask that we be given trust to create a plan, report back on the plan, and assume that we're going to do the work that the board wants us to do, but not minimize the impact it's going to have on those eighty-nine cardholders, eighty-nine hundred cardholders.
So I just, okay, so the policy that went to review, when we were doing that policy, we took out four C. And four C was an open access card can be used to borrow materials from all community library network collections excluding the mature content collection, which is the famous, same, same as B. But it can also be used to reserve and borrow materials from other libraries in the CIN and use to access eBooks, streaming content, or online databases. So that's the only, that's the piece that's missing, right? There's really not much difference between this policy as far as those access points. And the tiered minor part is taken out, but that's the big difference. That's the card, the card which gives them access to the online databases at CIN, but it still restricts them from the mature content collection. So just from my perspective as a librarian, there are other policies in place which would prevent the minor from accessing mature content, let's say, in the building. So if they have an open access card and they log in on a computer, they can't do anything on that computer anyway. That breaks the rules of conduct, right? And if they move outside of the building and use their card on their home computer, that's on the parents. So I'm actually, I wouldn't, I don't even think I was particularly involved or outspoken in the removal of C. It doesn't really impact our ability as a library to uphold the law because it's being upheld in the other policies. Like, they can still, we're not going to stop a minor from using their parents' card at home on their computer to access eBooks, right? So outside the building, that's up on the, that's up to the parents. Inside the building, we're already covered by the other policies which wouldn't allow a minor or anyone to be looking at things which are against the rules of conduct. So to me, that, it would seem, it does seem a shame from a library's perspective to not provide access to electronic resources because they make a big, make a big chunk of our current life, right, electronic resources. So that's the question. The Cooperative Information Network, in many ways, is also initiated as an electronic resource because they can't, they still have to order it in. Like, they'd have to order it in, which would mean they would have to have access to a computer. So then, I guess, for counsel, the question is whether if the child accesses the CIN piece of material by placing the hold on a library computer versus placing the hold on their phone at home, was it the CLN gave them access to it, right? Because it's still not a book of ours. It's a book of CINs. And their ability to get that book was through the card. But where they got the book is a different, or how they got the book. So I don't know. When you get to the electronic stuff, yeah, it's easy to just take C out, say, boom, done. But it does, like, eight thousand nine hundred people is a lot of people, right? And I don't think, and I agree with counsel, we shouldn't take it too lightly to just say, boom, all the resources off the books. A lot of it's a little bit complicated because when you have a consortium of libraries, everything's interconnected. So how do you pull that out? And CIN, obviously, there are members of CIN who aren't maybe taking the same approach as we are to the legislation. And that's fine. So a lot of this has to do with legal. I think I hear what he's saying. He didn't specifically say it, but I'm thinking if C was back on this policy, then it might have just passed review without any comment. But we only have A and B. The one that's missing is just that one piece of E resources, which, to be honest, one should realize that ninety percent, maybe even higher, of our E resources are shared. The CLN doesn't have a lot of E resources that aren't CIN, like Libby and Overdrive. All that stuff is CIN, a consortium agreement that we have. It's not, it's not like we can turn off CLN E resources only, right? They're kind of interconnected. So I mean, as the director, I'm just saying I'm totally open to the C, which used to be on this policy before it went to counsel, the way I wrote, written it, which was just basically the same as B. We're still not letting minors into the mature content collection in the building. That's a given. We're not going to do that. But it's a bit challenging, especially with those numbers, eight thousand nine hundred minors who have access to E resources, which you would just shut off. I mean, to me, that is something we should think about.
Trustee Plas? So the issue is, this is giving access to everything that Liberty Lake or other Washington libraries have, the part of CIN, on their E resources, and they don't have the same law that we have. So I don't want C back in. And I do not want to give minors access to that material at Liberty Lake because they aren't under the same law as us. And that's just the way it is. I mean, they can use their parents' card, but I don't think we should have any liability by issuing a card that lets someone under eighteen get into the CIN in Liberty Lake or other Washington libraries, or for that matter, Port Lane doesn't seem to be following it. But anyway, we should, we should not give them a card. We shouldn't have any responsibility because we have liability by the Idaho law, so.
Josie Robinson?
Yeah, I don't think that they should have access to Liberty Lake either. But I like the assistant director's idea that we forego doing something with it right now and let them, let the administration come back to us with an idea that is as best as they can get it.
Josie Robinson, I'll take your spoken on this show.
Since it seemed, it seems easy to get the number of how many minors have the all-access cards. Do you know how many minors have the restricted cards? Or the other two cards?
The minor limited is seven hundred and twenty-eight and the teen limited is eighty-five.
So that's a big difference, huge.
You're, she said seven eighty-eight and seven hundred and twenty-eight is the minor limited currently and teen limited is eighty-five.
Opposed to eight thousand?
Eight thousand nine hundred and six for a minor, or whatever that one currently is, a minor on the level of accessing this. And so if I could just say, like, again, I'm only coming at this from a librarian's perspective. And when someone says they don't want to access books at Liberty Lake, that's not the same thing as saying I don't want them to access a book on Libby, which is a shared E resource. And I have to turn to the assistant or the IT to say, is there a way to delineate that, right? Where they, maybe they can't place a hold on a book. But you got to understand, unless the card means they can go to, if they can walk into Liberty Lake as a minor with that card, actually in the building, and they borrow it, is that on CIN or is that on CLN? Versus they're going to place a hold on, for me, I automatically think about the library as a profession, what we actually can do. To me, it matters whether it's a hold, a reserve, what the ILS can do. This all matters to me. So I'm not seeing it the same as, like, if they walk into the building at Liberty Lake, use their CLN card, right? Is Liberty Lake providing access to that or is CLN providing access to that? Which is one issue. And the other one would simply be, is giving them a card with access to the online resources, right? Cannot, from a technical standpoint, practical standpoint, cannot be separated out in the ILS so that, yes, they can have access to E resources, but they can't place holds on CIN items. And again, it's all practical and procedural, so I don't know, I don't want the policy to just be a sweeping thing, which doesn't take into account the capabilities or the powers that we have within an ILS.
Trustee Plas?
Regardless, CLN gave them the card. They wouldn't be able to get that if they didn't have the CLN card. They don't live in Liberty Lake. I don't think they can get it. I don't know what the rules are. But I move that we accept the policy without the implementation schedule. Except the policy as written and let the staff get it implemented.
Yes, okay. Further discussion on this before we vote? It has been moved to accept or approve the library cards for minors policy as presented with no changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
abstained.
Set it up?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay. So the ayes have it. The policy is approved.
Sorry, I'm probably out of line here. But if this policy is approved, and which is fine, we can sort out how to implement it. But I'm not, do I understand, counsel, that you don't think that this policy as it is, is safe from a litigation standpoint?
My professional opinion is that the liability associated from immediately terminating eighty-nine hundred all-access cards for minors is going to be much greater than the liability that would be associated from any eighteen fifteen seventeen B liability. Because we already have, already taken reasonable steps to prohibit access to minors while they're in the sphere of the district's control. And we need to very narrowly tailor their access when they're not within the district's control because we don't act in local parentis.
Other comments?
Moves on to the next policy, material selection and acquisition policy. That one was changed. Oh, sorry.
I'd like to add a Section D that we didn't discuss before. So I would actually make a motion that we add Section D below C on page two. And it would say, material with any of the following subject matter: colon, abortion, police discrimination, drugs, gender identity, occult, racism, rape, suicide, violence, non-traditional families or lifestyle. I can explain why I want to add this.
Okay, I guess it's open for discussion. Trustee Plas is suggesting, if I got it correct here, adding another paragraph to the page two, which goes through the definitions used in the policy. And the suggestion of a motion is-
And yet the suggestion of a motion is to add, I'll give you the wording here. I guess these are other restrictions. Is that correct? Uh, yeah, well, so sure with these characteristics, I guess prohibited, is that considered, are considering appropriate for minors?
So so what? It would be on the next page under selection process. There's a second paragraph under that. Material with content that is materials, quote, materials inappropriate for minors as defined in the policy shall be excluded from the selection and acquisition of the library's juvenile, teen, and young adult collections. So this is the definition it's referring up here. It calls it material, materials inappropriate for minors. So this is just adding to it. And the reason is, I would I would like to put another sentence at the end of a previous paragraph, but it's basically we're protecting minors from culture wars and social change promotions is a priority because we don't send our children to war. So I'm just, this, this goes back to the Lonon County case that maybe legal is saying doesn't apply. I don't know. But they made a specific call out. Although libraries are afforded great discretion in their selection and acquisition policies, which is what this is, the First Amendment prohibits removal of books for viewpoint or content. So the removal, the withdrawal is what the content and viewpoint is all about. And we are given great discretion for our selection and acquisition. And I'm not saying to do this for, and by doing it this way, we're not doing it to adults. The adults can have all this material. Just like the director has said, you can have backs and anti-backs in the adult section, but we don't do this to our children in Kootenay County. So I'm just saying by adding these subjects, they're not people, they're not groups of people, they're subject materials. We're just, we're not gonna play uh, culture wars with our children. I didn't make enough comments, sorry. I'm done.
Trustee Robinson.
And I I'm sorry, where in this policy would this be inserted?
Under C.
Page two. Okay, got it right? Letter D. Want to create a letter D?
Think. Yeah, letter D.
Oh, I'll just, yes, I don't know this. And this, I don't know if this has to go back, obviously, to counsel, but probably gonna be hit with a content or viewpoint discrimination thing and we can expand. I I'd be happy not to have that kind of material in it for minors. So I'm not gonna say I do. I what? I don't want it in there, but that's something that would pass a legal sniff test. I don't know. I'm not trying to put counsel on his spot for this right now, but I don't know how legal about, unless unless he wishes to weigh in on it or not.
Well, don't feel obligated. With the Little versus Lonon County case, at least the, uh, the district court, but the Fifth Circuit appellate court's opinion stands for is, I quote, library personnel must necessarily consider content in curating a collection. However, the court has nowhere held that the government may make these decisions based solely on the intent to deprive the public of access to ideas with which it disagrees. That would violate the First Amendment and entirely shield all collection decisions from challenge. And they later went on to held that, the hold that the library director, based upon the evidence they had in the case. They didn't have a valid reason to remove a book under the musty criteria, which is kind of like the weeding criteria. It was not clear error for the district court to conclude that defendant's alternative explanations for removal were pretextual. So obviously, the Fifth Circuit Court is applying the free speech uh, test to collection and removal decisions. But this is slightly, okay, but this is going to create, like the government's speech doctrine holds that there isn't a difference between collection and selection. And so we have to pick our horse. Are we gonna ride the collection, selection, and free speech horse? Or are we gonna ride the government's speech horse? And I would recommend that we take the cautious approach and try and find a middle ground. And so I don't think that Yonah County stands for the proposition that we could uh, make a collection or a removal decision based solely on the intent to deprive the public of access to ideas which it disagrees. And so I would recommend that whatever evidence we create isn't about ideas we disagree with, but valid library science reasons for either collect, selecting, or removing. Which could be a ton. I mean, there's a ton of reasons that recognizing taking content into account is critical to the director's ability to perform this job.
Trustee, representing?
Well, maybe I'm confused, but I think that what trustee Floss is trying to present here has to do not just with acquiring, acquisition as opposed to removal, but also has to do with only acquisition of items for minors. And I didn't hear anything in what the, in in what counsel just said about making a distinction between minors and adults. So I don't see the problem with it at all. In fact, I think it's incumbent on us to do that. This kind of nonsense, this cultural Marxism, it's got to stop, and it's got to stop now. And we're not going to allow it to happen in Kootenay County.
Well, what else had you come up with? All right, trusty, trusty plus. And I'm sorry, and one thing I did hear, I thought was I was removal. I think it was meant to do with acquisitions too, so. I don't think it's necessary, but I said, I don't know if we can discriminate in the acquisition process.
That's, that's.
And you can't, I know we can't discriminate, we'll call it, in terms of removing things, but go ahead.
That's what I want to keep clarifying is Lonon County says libraries are afforded great discretion for their selection and acquisition decisions. It doesn't say what it means by it, but they can't make us, the court can't make us buy certain kind of books. What if we don't have the budget? What if we want to, to work on uh, increasing the classics or we wanna use our money to you know, buy some uh, computers or something. How, how can the court make us buy certain kind of books? Well, they can't. They're announcing it there. But they can get after us for viewpoint discrimination or content discrimination if we go remove the books. And I'm not saying to remove them. I'm saying this is just the selection and it only applies to minors under eighteen. It doesn't, what this would do, it doesn't touch anything about adults. Um, so I think it's an opportunity while we're reviewing this, this policy to enhance it and to help us stop this culture war that's going on. I go into the children's section and I see books on uh, you know, they're not L G B T, but they're on families. So somebody, you know, for like the six-year-old kids or five-year-old kids. And you pull out the book and here's, you know, this kind of family, here's that kind of family, this kind of family has, does this. And I don't know why we're pushing this. Why is C L N buying these books to, it it's a culture war. They're trying to expose young children to what I would say, non-traditional families or lifestyle. But just, let's not buy them. They, when they get eighteen, they can go look at it all they want.
I'm just curious if counsel thinks if staff makes decisions based upon what the public wants without saying what we can't buy by putting a policy? And I I'm not sure where to go with it. And and it's, again, it's for minors, but if if the staff is making purchase decisions based upon the patrons' demands as what they want, and if that's in line with uh, you know, I'm losing my train of thought on this. It's confusing stuff. I don't want to recklessly put us into litigation corners here. I'd also like to see, not see books about, I guess, I I guess you're saying, books about drugs or gender identity and so forth and not in violence, but I don't, I don't even know how you sort those out, to be honest with you. So I don't know. Other thoughts on this? Trustee Austin.
Okay. Yeah, um, I, I didn't write down all of the uh, the categories, but I think that I I agree with those. Um, but I also agree with what trustee Hanley said earlier. And just the the general principle that it's not usually a good idea to change something after it's gone to legal review because then we have to do all that cost of of sending it to legal review again. Anyway, I just want to put that there.
Trustee Robinson.
Well, I was gonna go into reasons why I don't agree with putting D in, but I'll just, just say I don't agree with putting D out.
Trustee, number plus.
I I definitely think if we could approve this, it should go to legal counsel again. This, this is, it was a chance to make a change to protect minors even further. And I think Lonon County is really clear. And I I think somebody would have a real hard time trying to sue us for not spending money on this material. And a policy or not, if we just don't do it, uh, who, who's, who's a judge to sit there and say, you should have bought this book and that book and these books? They're not gonna do it. It's, it should go to legal review and we should take into account Lonon County that libraries are afforded great discretion for their selection and acquisition decisions. And let's do something more to protect youth in Kootenay County.
Trustee, uh, representing?
I move that we that we approve this with the proviso that it first goes to uh, legal counsel and that we get it done now. With the inclusion of Delta in there.
It's really reminding me, I don't remember what was changed in here as to why we're reviewing it right now. There's no, there are no covers on it. And again, why, what changes were incorporated into this draft? Why is it backed up? Did we have to change some terminology somewhere? I don't even know how we're on, you know, there.
It was the bottom of page three. We've got uh, it's not in green, but um, second, or the second to the last paragraph on page three, I think that was added, wasn't it, director? It said, material content that is deemed harmful to minors pursuant pursuant to Idaho codes, blah, blah, blah. If selected for purchase, will be located in the mature content collection of the community library. So that was more a statement for if it's this kind of material, even if it's purchased for adults, this kind, if it's this kind of material, it's gonna go in this mature collection. That was a change.
Director?
Yeah, uh, yeah. Um, it was that one green section and at the time, it was because this was coming after the decision by the board to segregate. So the entire, including the adults. So without it there, it doesn't give enough uh, information about what, because we will still be getting this stuff and to be put somewhere. So it was just added to this, wasn't actually changed at all in there, except that one paragraph.
Since since that was, I'll get back to you, trustee Robinson. Um, since that was the only thing added, I wonder if we could approve this policy that the terminology matches up to the proposed draft or or we're already rolling with apparently, mature content collection wording. And then so because it's already gone through legal review, approve it. And then what is a future agenda item to go ahead and add this extra terminology? Because we're, we're still here on the board and we can go ahead and put that in, but otherwise if I I'm not gonna be comfortable putting that in there without at least getting some kind of legal review input. As much as I'd like to put it in there, I just don't, I'm comfortable going down the way without uh, at least asking what the impact of that risk is. Trustee Robinson?
Okay, so who, who's gonna decide what occult actually means? I'm assuming that there are people that would not want, I have the only one I can think of is Harry Potter uh, brought into the library, because there are plenty of people that consider that occult. Um, violence, violence of what? Violence between who? Uh, and I'm talking, these are books for, say, a seventeen-year-old. Um, can there not be a character who's a U F C fighter? That's considered violence by a lot of people. Um, traditional families. What exactly is traditional family? I mean, I have my opinion on what it is. And I'm sure other people have their opinions on what it is. But what, what exactly does that mean? Um, police discrimination, is that discriminating against the police or police discriminating against a person? Drugs, can we not tell children that drugs are bad? So we can't have any books that say drugs are bad and give examples. So none of this is something that somebody on the team of acquisition can be like, oh, okay, um, hmm, this book for a seventeen-year-old has the word abortion in it. Can't get it, even though it has nothing to do with that. And it might even say how horrible of an experience somebody had having one and how their life has been horrible ever since. These aren't just books for little kids. These are books for teenagers. So if anybody can tell me exactly what all of these mean and how somebody can actually tell me what occult, what what that is for a book, vampires, vampire books, is that occult? Um, suicide, I don't, I, I don't know books. I don't think I've read a book of suicide as a kid, but uh, you know, what does that mean? And it, I, if somebody can clearly say that these are terms that every single person agrees on or understands what they mean, then I might consider this. But other than that, this is just a bunch of words that are confusing and are not able to be enforced in any way that I can imagine.
That was my suggestion. I'll make a motion since there's no motion on the board.
We did have a motion.
We did have a motion. I'm sorry. Oh.
Please go ahead and make your motion. I don't have it.
In my head.
I moved that uh, that we go ahead and include D in the uh, material selection and acquisition policy. Uh, give a tentative approval and send it to counsel for review.
I don't think we can do tentative. Have we got, director? I see them. I see them.
Yes. Well, I guess I meant give it approval, I mean, counsel's.
Approval to send to counsel.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Andrew.
So I guess I just wanted to say so libraries are built on certain foundations. One of them is classification cataloging. And and we have books, very large books for subject headings. So when you just say a subject, it's very challenging, right? Because obviously, there could be a great book on the, you know, the pros and cons of something. Um, a lot of these subjects here could be valid subjects for a certain age, seventeen, sixteen, that do reports at school. Right? On these subjects. So the other points being made, I think some of the public made as well about ideological warfare and cultural war and and all that kind of stuff isn't really covered here. Maybe that's the objective. The objective is to say C L N is not going to engage in propaganda and ultra-war indoctrination in there in minors. Then that's different than say that. But just to list a bunch of subjects doesn't help in collection development because there'll be a lot of books that will have those subjects that may be treated in a, in a perfectly benign way or it, well, this has nothing to do with law because if you could have a book about abortion, which is totally fine, but on page fifty-five is a steamy sex scene, which automatically kicks the legal thing in and boom, it's legally illegal, right? I mean, that's, that's what we're talking about. But this is a little bit different, right? So I'm not saying one thing or another here, except I did say in my directive that neutrality in the special collection known as the children's collection does mean something a little bit different than it does in the general collection. So um, if the objective is to say something along the lines of C L N is not going to to promote the indoctrination uh, of 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 minors. the indoctrination of minors with ideas that, whatever the wording is, you know, that anyone in the common, in the community would assume, or like, the average person eighteen years of age or older, applying contemporary community standards, you know, finds that material to be cultural war or something like that. But I think that's the approach that should be taken, rather than delineating subject headings, because it would tie the hand with the collection development department in regards to those specific subjects. You know, I mean, we have to have the freedom to be able to say, this book which discusses suicide or has some violence in it, it doesn't break any laws, right? It isn't gratuitous extreme or something, you know, that would fall under the law. And we would make that decision, that's kind of our speciality, right? That we would look at these books and we would, we would make those decisions. So, I mean, if we wanted to accomplish something like that, then I wouldn't use subject headings to do it, because the subject headings don't actually indicate whether it is propaganda or is indoctrination or is a culture war. It's just a subject heading.
Trustee plus.
So I was originally going to propose another sentence earlier on, and I think I said that, protecting minors from culture wars and social change promotion is a priority because we don't send our children to war. I was going to add that, but I think these subjects, if, I'm tired of hearing about the, in CLN, books, they're usually fiction, and they're about young adults, and it involves rape, and maybe it doesn't get into a specific description that would make it violate the Idaho harmful material for minors, but we've got books that talk about the young people committing suicide, and I think it's, it's pretty clear, you just, if it's got that subject matter, we don't buy it. And I would like to add another sentence to it, but maybe it doesn't go here, because this isn't just the definition, but anyway, I would like to add this, and the reason it's an opportunity, we're reviewing the policy, yeah, it'll delay it a month while it gets reviewed again, but let's do this and enhance the policy so that it doesn't matter who's on the staff, CLN doesn't buy these kind of books.
Castle.
Just for the record, I think it's important to state that the director already has authority to not select books that don't meet the material's harmful to minors definition of Idaho Code eighteen fifteen seventeen B in the minors section. He already has that discretion. If he finds a book that treats abortion, and he makes an independent determination that it's not appropriate to collect for that, to select for that collection, he's free to do that, nothing constrains him. But if we say that to these eighty-nine-hundred-and-six families or children that now no longer have access to a whole lot of resources they've already been adding, that, oh, by the way, you're not going to have access to any book that touches on in any way non-traditional families or lifestyle, now we're giving them an additional basis to be angry at us, right? And then I would also challenge you to come up with one book, any book, that doesn't fall into this list. I'm not agreeing with everything on the list, I'm not disagreeing with the culture war, I'm totally on board with protecting the children, all of that. What I'm simply saying is that the director's mentioning how it's unworkable by talking about a category, and I agree. We're not talking about a book the library didn't purchase, that's an easy case on standing. What right does a child have to a single book? The director's job is to sort the gold from the garbage, we know that, that's what the courts say. But when the library, a government entity comes in and says, but not this entire category of books, then it raises the specter of, well, why not this category? And non-traditional families is an easy one to cast in the light of animus, because it is in a binary, non-traditional versus traditional. So banning the purchase of non-traditional is the library saying, we prefer traditional, right? So that one's a little different than the rest of them. Drugs, gender abortion, gender identity, abortion, occult races, and rape, suicide violence, those can all share this hyper-sexualized or violence obscenity type thing the courts are very concerned about children being exposed to, and so those are, those are a lot closer to something that we could implement a collection decision on. But I would just encourage the board to think about empowering the director to make appropriate collection decisions and not necessarily prescribing his ability to create a beautiful collection, right? So I'm not opposed to the idea in theory, but I think that having this big of a list and popping it into the definition for material, it's going to be a little awkward, because we refer to that definition. So if we're going to do it, we need to make sure it's very clear specifically what, and that it only applies to minors, but I just already think the director's doing that. I mean, you can have an appropriate or an inappropriate book on any one of these categories, and he already has the authority to collect it or not. And then if we're not happy with it, the Board of Trustees can file a reconsideration or relocation request, nothing prohibits you, any one of you individually, from filing one. And so there are avenues, and so in specificity, what I want to do here is not give the court reason to say, wow, this was really broad, right? So if we're going to do it, let's do it in a defensible way that's very narrowly tailored and not so broad that we can create a hypothetical and say, see, that was unnecessary, right? And so I like, I like the idea in general, but I think a list with these broad categories is going to be really unworkable. And I can tell you that if we put it into the material selection and acquisition policy, I'm not going to be able to approve it, because I can find too many ways to attack it, right? How I would attack it personally. And so I would like to develop it more in terms of what the director's already doing.
Mr. Trustee plus wish to keep his motion on the floor.
Well, it's Trustee Ambrose's motion, but I would, I would say, what if, you know, we lose our library director? What if he goes back to New Hampshire, he doesn't like, no, Idaho or something? This is CLN's position on this, and nothing is stopping a seventeen-year-old from getting a book on abortion in the adult section that hasn't been moved over to the, to the mature They have access, will be probably given access to the entire library, and they can go look at these topics anything they want, if they've been given access to the entire library, because they're, these will be adult books with these, you know, on drugs, whether it's anti-drugs or for drugs or whatever, they will have access to it, but I just don't want it bought for the children's section, for the minors.
Okay. We're running out of time here, we're going to have to extend the meeting, we're going to continue. Mr. Stevens, wish to keep this motion on the floor, because if it's a parliamentary, I don't know if that's the proper word for it here, call the question, I don't mean we vote on it, I'm not really sure.
That's what.
Is that what it means? Do you wish to keep this motion on the floor?
I really would like to have some consultation with, with counsel on how to put wording in there that will immunize us from these cultural wars.
Okay, I take that as a no. So, do we, do you wish to, well, I said no, you're not going to do it, so do you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, so my motion now is to approve the policy that's been passed out to the board here, which was changed only to make sure the terminology of mature content collection is reflected, and we can make additional changes or amendments at another time, but for the sake of making progress, that's my motion. So I move to approve the motion, the policy, the material selection acquisition policy. All those in, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Two. Okay, motion is carried, approved, and now we'll entertain a motion to extend the meeting.
I move that we extend the meeting until five-fifty.
It has been moved to extend the meeting until five-fifty. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Hey, next item on the agenda, we continue on here, is, I have a request for relocation, you know, that correct? Yes, because I think it's the form, the request for relocation of material form, I believe. Trustee, everything?
For the sake of accuracy, the director, did our assistant director get that there were two A's on that last row?
No, we didn't get that.
Okay, who was that? One, two, okay, but thank you. If I have the right item next on the agenda, it was a form here for relocation of material. Want to have questions or comments on what's out there? Looks like I had one. On page two, here's the bottom, the last paragraph, the completed form will be given to the library director. Is that still correct, or should it be, the completed form be given to the collections development department?
Oh, it's fine, it's just when it comes to me, I'm sent it on and questioned.
Very good, thank you. Trustee plus.
So I believe the only change is on the top of page two, or sentence, are you requesting material be relocated to the mature content collection, or it used to say adult access only, I think, is that?
Yeah, that's correct. Is there further discussion, questions on this form? Okay, all those in favor of approving this form?
Is there a motion for it already?
Oh, sorry, I would entertain a motion.
I move that.
I'm still practicing my parliamentary stuff, but thank you for calling out.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I move that we accept the request for relocation of material form, approve, do I put the date six seventeen?
I guess.
No, the already existing request for relocation material?
I guess, the one presented in the packet, I guess.
There you go, presented in the packet, January sixteen.
It has been moved to approve the request for relocation of material form that was provided in the packet. Are you voting, or are you asking a question before?
Comments?
Okay, well, hold up. Question, go ahead.
I just wanted to make clear that this form does not require that if the person filling it out be a minor or an adult or a parent or guardian, just simply ask the question, are you? And that allows legal to know how to process it. If anybody, you know, in the community can fill this out, and I think it should be that way. If you see something, say something, please let us know.
Thank you, so you're clarifying that, okay. All those in favor of approving the request relocation form presented in the packet, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, motion carried. Okay, let's do it, we're still on eleven. Yeah, there's a new form happening. Okay, and next I am on the agenda, is the, oh, I guess the first question is, I'm going to present, is, do we think we need a policy regarding a new mature content collection slash adult access only restricted areas? Do we need a policy?
Yes.
Yes, okay, the answer in hearing is yes? No, up there. I think, oh, I hope yes, I guess, nothing, nothing actually creates it. This is the only direction it's going to go. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we go through, let's say proper terminology.
I don't think you need a motion for that.
I can make a motion, I think.
You can, but you don't have to.
I don't have to, but I have to, they go through the mature content collection policy, that version, Syria. So, we're not obviously going to finish it today, but we can start on it, but that one looks to me like a lighter lift than the other one, so.
Than the old adult, or the adult access only restricted?
Correct, yes, but instead of the adult access only restricted area. And I'll make my first comment on both facets. I just feel the only thing I'm, I guess, looking at, the way it uses the terminology here, just a suitable room in a certain area, another place talks about a room, and a room and a room and an entrance door, and I feel like the director's painting himself in the corner, I prefer to go with area or location, and that way you're not forced to have a room somewhere, so, I can, I have a more mark in here where that is, so that's all I have. Director?
So just for clarity's sake, the adult access only restricted areas policy, it was on by Trustee. This mature content collection policy is something I drafted up just to be like one or the other, like, it's a version of the other one, so just so we're clear on that, but on two different things, this is my version of that thing. The reason why I'm specifying rooms is because that actually is my intention, there is a room, post falls, which I have my mind on as far as that being the location. Again, this is a special collection, special collection, they're often in rooms, just like the genealogy one is, and a lot of historical collections are like that, so, again, following special collection principles in the library world, that's why I specified a room, I have one in mind here in post fall already, it refers to the door, because I could, you know, see the title on the door with the frosted, you know, text, and it would say adult access or something, or something like that, so that's why I'm being specific in the establishment of this policy.
Something else, I thought, Trustee plus?
Yeah, I like the way the library director has taken the policy I had and whittled it down, but I do object to a policy that the board is, is coming from the board, basically, telling the library staff, you shall use a certain room, and it shall be in post falls, and you shall do this at Hayden Library as needed and so forth. I would rather this, end of that first sentence, a special, say, the mature content collection is a special collection in all, or fewer CLN libraries, in all or subset, I guess it is. I would like it to be in all libraries, but it can be in fewer, so, I don't think we should get into the specifics. He can still meet the policy by picking a room in, in post falls, or if he didn't want to have a room, he can have a closet, he can do it any way he wants, but I think we should just not be so specific. And I don't know that we should say special collection rooms, special collection areas. So that's kind of my comment, and then the other comment was down here on seven, I don't know without just calling it out, whether somebody's going to read and know what they have to do. I put in for, if a parent or a legal guardian wants to accompany, that's what he's got here, they must comply with Idaho Code eighteen fifteen seventeen B six B. Well, what that is, and I would like us to call it out and say that the staff should ask them to sign a form, that's what that quote says, is that, and I've got it on number six on my form, they should either ask them to leave the area or sign a form, prepared form CLN has stating that he's the minor's legal guardian, because it's in the Idaho Code, but they have to sign that form. So we need to cover ourselves if an adult is with them, and I think we should call it out a little bit more like I did, what they have, what the CLN has to do.
Trustee Austin, jump first, and then, and you say, Trustee Austin?
Oh, I was just going to say that I like the mature content collection policy, it's written to be workable from the librarian's point of view, and I didn't have any changes to it that I wanted to make.
Mr. Stevens.
Director Wolf has done a great job of distilling.
Director Walters did a great job of distilling, um, what, uh, what trustee Kloss has here, and the only thing I have issue with, which I still have issue with, is a parent or legal guardian accompanying their child, their minor into the mature content collection. Now, it's true that the law does say that can happen, doesn't say we have to allow that to happen. And it says what happens, and we talked about this, I'm not going to regurgitate it, but what happens when one of our staff sees a minor going in with their parent or guardian, and actually go over, and then they have to actually have to sign some kind of a form? That's actually in the statute. Why, why do we want our library staff to be policemen? I think it's wrong. No minors in the mature content collection area, simple. That takes care of it all, and then Director Walters doesn't have to deputize his staff. So, I, I'm sorry, that, I, I can't believe that we are all right having parents. They think, under what, under the guise that they know what's best for their children? Forget that, if you were at Pride of the Park two and a half years ago, you wouldn't be saying that. So, no, I, I say no minors in the area, period. Thank you.
I'll respond to that one. Uh, I, I have the statute right here, but it specifically says in eighteen fifteen seventeen B six B, if I have the right paragraph there, verified the minor involved, this is due with access, I guess, was accompanied at the time of the act by his parent or legal guardian or by another adult, and the adult represented that he was a minor's parent or legal guardian, and signed a written statement to that effect. I think that's, as a reasonable step as we can take, that's what the law reads, I don't, I'm not making that up.
May I respond?
Yes, please.
No, the, the issue isn't whether we can do that or not, I'm not saying we can. Saying why do we want to put ourselves through that, and our staff, and, and Director Walters' staff? It's going to be, it's going to be an encumbrance on them. But what I'm saying is, simple law, that, a simple rule, simple policy is, we're not allowing minors into that area, period.
There might be some kind of parental rights statute stuff that covers that, well, I don't know.
That's a different, different animal there. Yes, director?
I, I just want to say that I, I, I wouldn't want the decision to be made based on the fact, you know, fact, but on the assumption that it, it's, you might work with those staff. From the very get-go here, I'm, I'm just here to obey the law, I'm just here to follow the legislation. So, this is in there because the legislation allows for it, and we are willing to put in the time, the energy, and the effort. Like I said at the very beginning, when I arrived here, our staff are responsible for the collections, we're not responsible for the people. So we're having, uh, as I say in here, a diligent supervision of the collection. So, we won't allow anyone into that collection unless they're allowed to be in there, which makes eighteen and up. And according to eighteen fifteen seventeen B six B, we, we will do it. We will, we will do whatever it takes to comply with the legislation, because that's what good citizens and good institutions do. So I don't want it to be a decision based on the, the assumption that we can't do this, it is our job to do it, and we will do it. And I don't see any reason why we shouldn't just follow along the way it's written.
I'd like to just make a comment, I, I agree with trustee Addison. I'm okay with this entire draft policy as written. Um, I'm also open to the idea that trustee Kloss threw out about not restricting us to Post Falls and taking that out of there, and just, and the same thing with the Hayden site. And that way, if they decide they want to, and it does allow, the way it's written, not there, other libraries, based upon their size, they can also do this, but meaning have a, a mature content collection area as well. So, just, uh, so I'm good as it stands, or just instead of defining where those places are? Other questions, trustee Kloss?
Um, I, I think we should make it clear that we would like it in all libraries, because the consequence is, somebody in Harrison that wants to get one, one of the books that would be in this collection, has to drive up here or order the book to be delivered down there, and I guess, it's just, if they had their own section, that'd be better. But I think we need to beef this up a little more on what collection location is. All we're talking about here in this first paragraph is a, a, a room. So, I think we should be describing that it's a, a room with a, you know, a door access that has, uh, I don't know if we have, I guess it is clearly marked in four. But it, it should say not just that it's the mature contact collection, it, yeah, it should, it's adult access only, but we need to make it clear minors are not allowed, and there's no way to get in except through a door. And it could be, if you don't have a room, it could be a cabinet. It could actually be an open area if it's clearly marked. I think, I think we need to allow ourselves, or put something in here a little bit more for a definition of what the area is. Is what I would like.
Trustee Robinson?
I actually like the idea of removing the word room and saying area for all of them, especially if, the trustees are saying that they want this in a whole library. Because some of the libraries, we can't have, you know, a special room. So I think areas would be a good word to use. I don't think that we need to describe each one, uh, out exactly, just an, a suitable area would be fine. And, uh, um, the last, my train of thought was second. But, uh, yeah, I like, I like the policy, myself.
Do you have a ready?
I, I think that Director Walters put a lot of thought into this, and I'd just like to leave paragraph one just as, exactly as it is.
You're throwing feints at me chiming in today, but I feel it is my duty and I must. So, again, I just want to caution the board that we don't let the affirmative defense tail wag the federal liability dog. And when we start talking about leasing minors, the presumption for a government entity is that parents are fit and entitled to the undisturbed care, custody, and control of the minor. And in eighteen fifteen seventeen B, the affirmative defenses only come up after we're sued. And we can only be sued if we have failed to relocate a book after a parent has given us a written request to do so. So, a child could come into the library and go access the material, and unless there's a written relocation request, we will not get sued, nor need the affirmative defense. So I think the, the liability for that is extremely low. And I would give the director a lot of discretion about coming up with what reasonable steps look like in that scenario. Because the farther we get into the parental rights realm, the, it's equivalent to, getting off the professional library services path. I, I hope that, I'm clear with that, so.
Anyway, but gets another time constraint here, and I don't think we're going to solve this one unless we want to just vote on it as is, or, uh, and we have still on the agenda strategic plan, that can be done in one minute, right? No, I'm kidding, but.
Sure.
And responses to public comment, and then future agenda requests. Do we have a, do we want to extend the meeting, or, or not, trustee Kloss?
I move that we extend the meeting to six ten.
It has been moved to extend the meeting to six ten. All those in favor? Oh, there's discussion?
I can't say any, any longer. I mean, Audison wanted to speak.
She, Audison?
Um, oh, well, I said aye for that particular thing. I forgot what I was, oh, I was going to, you know, I forgot what I was going to say.
Nothing? Okay. Was there another name? Okay, well, we don't do any voting things, I guess. Oh, I mean, um, it's been a move to extend a meeting until six ten. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Did you get all the cheers in these? Okay. Have you taken enough? I didn't, okay. All right, uh, the meeting is decided. Some people, um, presenting. Oh, yeah, I'll get her a second. Go ahead.
Before we lose, before we lose, uh, one of our voters, trustee, I would like to, we'd like to ask that we just vote on this, as it stands.
So you're pulling in a question, you want to follow a question? Yeah. So, and I, I'm going back to make sure of my comment, that means we got to vote, yeah, you're nailed this right now, I'm all right, okay? It is, it is, can you vote, take a motion?
Audrey, I'd like to speak.
Oh, trustee Addison, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so, I think he didn't make a motion, maybe I'm confused on that. But we would need to send it to legal review first, and we can do that by consensus rather than motion.
Okay, all right, good. So do we have consensus to tentative legal court not approve, but send this to?
I, I actually, I, I would, I would say that since you've already adopted the other policies, without this policy, we have a gap, and this clarifies some things, and so I would say pass it. Because it, it allows parents to accompany minors in this section, and it gives the director guidance on what to do, and he doesn't know what to do right now. You know, he wants some guidance. I, I wouldn't be so specific on making a room, that's my personal preference. I'm not saying legally you can't, but I wouldn't have an objection in this specific procedural posture to have this policy passed. Otherwise, I think it kind of throws everything in a, you're, you know, how do you read the rest of them without this, is my point.
We can always amend it later, too. Okay, trustee Kloss?
Well, I, I would make a motion that we approve it, striking, uh, in the paragraph number one. Striking at the end of the first sentence, in a suitable room at Post Falls, and continually to strike.
Point of order. Wasn't there, wasn't there a call to vote or whatever?
We haven't had a motion yet, there's no motion.
Then you vote on the follow-up question. Did we call a question?
Yeah, you have to have a motion to call the question.
So there was no motion made?
There was no motion?
No, one's made a motion, yeah. So I'm making a motion. I'm, I'm saying let's strike the part about Post Falls Library and Hayden Library, and just put, continue with special collections rooms will be considered.
Point of order, uh, trustee here.
Please state your point of order.
A trustee over here says that he did make a motion.
I thought that I was making a motion, Chair.
I, I kind of did too, but, okay, so, please make a motion, then if you wish, right now, to clarify it.
My motion would simply to approve it, just as it is. Now, I, I, I led off simply by saying that Director Walters has put quite a bit of thought into it, let's just go ahead and, and do this. That's my motion.
It has been moved to approve, uh, I mean, legal review, it has been moved to approve, if I'm correct, the mature content collection policy provided to the board? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye, so it, it's approved. Let's see what was next. Well, the next one is a policy, again, we have internet use, I believe it's, can we double check? Yes, I am number twelve. It's, uh, internet use safety policy, computer use policy. Um, I don't know if the director wants to, go ahead, trustee, Anderson, resume.
In the interim, uh, we've discovered, I've discovered that actually, uh, there is some flaw in the filtering. I just realized this, I was told about this, that there is some flaw in the filtering of the internet, and that it even allows someone to go into, uh, the Wi-Fi and pull up Penthouse magazine, I don't know how that's possible. So, and, and I'm not trying to blindside Director Walters, but Director Walters checked to make sure that the Wi-Fi was safe. He believed it, we all believed it, I think there's some kind of a technical glitch.
Yeah. It is.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I talked to IT about that, but, but it was, it, the filtering software doesn't, um, like even when we had the meeting last time, I think it was the treasurer tried to do something on her phone. Pulling up, uh, a hit in Google isn't the same thing as accessing it, so I don't know what the person tried in that test. But if, if, if you, if you search for something in Google, you'll, you'll get the hits. But if you clicked on it, it doesn't necessarily get you there. So I don't know, again, I don't know what the test was, but that would be a question for IT. So, like, I mean, I'll, so.
I'll show it to you.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
I think there's some kind of glitch in it.
As far as these policies are concerned, I mean, if you want to get through quickly, the one simple thing is that the computer use policy approved in ten twenty one nineteen, sits on our website, it should really be superseded, because the internet use safety policy, this is, this is basically the same policy, but it's, they both sit there. So I was just hoping that we could supersede, or, for the end, whatever the technical language is, the computer use policy is the same thing, and it's just older. So, it shouldn't really be on the books, and then the internet use safety policy replaced it. And just to speak to some of the things from the last meeting, like there was concern obviously about the Wi-Fi, so I, I did confirm that, obviously, the, the Wi-Fi is filtered the same as the rest of it. There's some questions about tracking. We can track, um, the computer use down to the minute, as far as statistics go. Uh, the Wi-Fi tracking includes the number of devices connected and the daily data transfer. Um, I, we still have to confirm how specific, whether you can get hourly data transfer versus just daily. So there, there were questions about tracking, which kind of ables the policy, which, the design is changing the policy itself, but from that time, I don't, I don't remember. Not sure, oh, I didn't. Um, but anyway, so the tracking question, and then the video game, um, there was some concern about video games. But again, um, video games can't be filtered in the system, but the content, if an online video game is sexually explicit content, then, then that's a different issue. That's, and that's why the one change, I think, different from the last time you saw this policy, in number eleven on page two, I just added the, it used to just say uploading software, but it's actually uploading and or downloading the software, other programs on library computers, so. We have software on there where someone downloads something, it gets wiped every time the thing's rebooted, but I just added that one up, because there used to be a time, I think, where uploading, downloading, I've been synonymous, but nowadays it means something different. Other than that, there really wasn't much changes. I, I did add the word Wi-Fi whenever it was unclear whether that we were talking about filtering or not, so. I think most of the reason why I got tabled last time was just because I was unclear on some of the Wi-Fi questions.
I think Audrey's standing, you want to speak?
Okay, I'm not heard, Tom, person didn't speak, and my, just trustee Kloss, trustee Addison?
All right, uh, so, so when we, um, approve the internet use safety policy, we would just have in the motion that it supersedes the computer use policy. Um, and also, there was an error on page one of the internet use safety policy. See, under prohibited, prohibited activities number five, we had at the December meeting by consensus agreed to remove the, especially in matters of race, creed, or color, national origin, gender, disability, or sexual orientation. And that is in the minutes that we approved earlier today.
There are questions or comments on the policy? Trustee Kloss?
So, these questions about the filtering and what, whether they're working or not, we don't have to change anything in the policy. Are we calling out that the Wi-Fi shall be filtered?
It's eight one, it's, uh. No, we're just, we're just adding it for clarity, I think, it is, it is filtered, we're not changing anything.
Where, where is it mentioned, I guess?
Uh, so it comes up on, um,
On the third page?
Bottom page three. Uh, thereafter, calling, on any, on any public accessible computer within an access and the CLN Wi-Fi network.
Okay, so it is, it is.
It was, it was only, it wasn't clear in the original.
Yeah. Well, I'm fine with that, that's, I do, I would like to make the change that trustee Addison pointed out on number five on page one.
I agree, trustee Addison, I think suggested on. I agree, trustee Addison, I think suggested on page one, prohibited activities, item number five, when it actually itemizes, so it reads harassment or bullying of staff or members of the public. Those are, well, going to the top, examples of library internet use prohibited activities, including but are not limited to harassment or bullying of staff of the public. And striking especially for race, creed, color, so forth, so forth. I support deleting that. It's in line with another policy we worked on. Other thoughts? So ahead, trustee Addison.
We, we'd actually already had consensus on that. It just didn't make it into the, this policy. But I did have actually another question. Should the title of it be internet and computer use safety policy or is it fine as is?
Well, yeah, the only thing about computer, like I think it was more, it's more the hardware issue if they're doing damage to hardware, which is included in here. But the bulk of it, so I think it's prohibited activities number fourteen, destruction or damage to equipment, software. I think that's the main part of the computer use aspect. For the most part, it's about internet use. So that doesn't mean that the name changes to include both words, but in this context, this century, I guess, should say, the only issue with computer use would be damaging the physical hardware.
Back to that, so is there, was there something we know for sure going back to trustee Addison's commentary?
Yeah, that's probably my, yeah. It's probably just me working with the different versions of the documents and I think what's sent out.
So we're striking that?
Yeah, it was already in the minutes.
Okay, were there other changes to this besides that? Trustee plus.
I, I moved that we approve this policy with the correction noted on number five and also changing the name from internet use to internet and computer use.
I'll ask one question as part of the discussion. Has this gone through a legal review? Chair, figure chair. Trustee Addison, is this going through legal review yet? Because are we approving this tentatively pending legal review?
I don't think it's gone through legal review.
Do you suggest it does go through legal or is this?
Your changes aren't significant?
No, they don't contribute at all. All right.
Was given to him.
So you made it, you made it a motion to approve, is that correct?
Motion to approve it with the correction on number five.
Right, on page one.
On page one and adding after the word to the title, internet and computer use safety policy to the title and computer with the add.
It has been moved to approve the internet use safety policy presented to the board with the changes as noted. All those in favor? See if anybody's saying aye.
Hold on.
Okay, Addison, please go ahead.
So more discussion was just that, don't we also need to say that it supersedes the computer use safety policy? So I, I guess I move to amend, just add that at the end of trustee Pla's motion and supersedes the computer use policy.
Okay, I'll try to get the whole thing down. It has been moved to approve the internet use safety policy as provided to the board with the two changes as noted and to, what do we call it, delete? Or?
That it supersedes.
That it supersedes. Community library network computer use policy of ten twenty one nineteen. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Right, then motion is carried. Did you catch the votes? I don't know. It's approved. Finalize time, next. Okay. And this was strategic plan. I don't know how much you want to get on that or let us know what you're doing there.
Yeah, it'll be very quick. So very simply, the four steps in this process. There are no funds necessary in the fiscal year twenty five to outsource this, right, and like that, so that's, that's fine. Step one is establishing a strategic plan team, which I'm going to be doing right now. Or working with my communications department, going to be, you know, selecting, you know, the best possible people with skill sets to lead the various aspects of the strategic plan. So the first step is establishing the team. The second step, which will take effect as soon as that happens, is the community assessment, which three main problems with the community assessment would be a community needs survey. It'd be online, but it'll also be local branch, hard copy type stuff. And then there'd be focus groups at the branch level and stakeholder meetings as well as usually the three problems. And that's the longest part of this process, that's step two. And I think that would take us from soon as the team is established to the fall. That's all, that's where we get all the data from. And then because the fall, I think in fiscal year twenty six, so probably bring forward the idea of putting some funds aside for the like last few stages. Stage three would be the compilation and assessment of the data, which is going to include, lack of a better word, a retreat. A staff retreat, a board retreat, where this is where the board comes in, takes that data and creates a vision, admission statement, and we establish the goals. And then the final step obviously is publishing it. We could publish it in-house, but obviously printing will, will need, will need some funds for that. So come fiscal year twenty six in October, that's when we would be implementing the last few stages, which would be that, that sort of retreat period where the, the board and the staff are working with the data. And then finally, the actual publication, which I would shoot for obviously January twenty twenty six. And it would obviously be in the form of a and then actually printing out, you know, the documents for the public to pick up and crash and stuff. So it would basically, those are the four kind of steps and we're into step one now where we establish a team. Step two is the big one, where we spend most of this year collecting data. As far as the current strategic plan is concerned, you know, at this stage in the game, usually it's just rolled into the assessment process. We look at it and we say, what did we achieve? What didn't we achieve? What do we want to keep? What do we want to roll over? What do we just let go? So that to me, it's not really about the twenty five strategic plan. That one is over in the sense that it just becomes part of the assessment as we move on to the twenty six, twenty eight plan. So, yeah, so it, it's pretty much, needs to start now. And the biggest chunk will be certainly in the next month or so, all the way until late, late summer, early September, when we would be finished collecting all the data and then move on to the next few stages.
So I, I lost track of your dates, but you were saying the, collecting the data is through fall of twenty five.
Yeah.
And then there's a retreat, but I thought you said October twenties.
Yeah.
Six, but you mean twenty five.
Yes, twenty five, yeah, because basically, yes, because no money, no money was put aside for the process. I think last time, CLN kind of outsourced the whole thing.
Yeah.
So I don't think there's a need to outsource the whole thing, but, but come, come the twenty six, basically in October, that gives us October, November, December to, to, to work with the data, which usually requires a facilitator so that the retreats with the board and the machines related staff are conducted by the same person, the same style, and we're able to arrive at the goals and mission and vision. And then obviously some money to pay for professional printing. Not necessarily professional designer, we'd be a communications department, so we could design in-house, but there's obviously going to be some cost to, to print it.
And then, and then what was the third thing on the date? You said this need survey, the focus group at the branch and what was?
So the biggest one is the community need survey, which is probably an online forum.
Community?
Yeah, community needs survey. I mean, you can call it, it's just basically the survey. It's an online survey. We're reaching out to the entire community for them to give us feedback. The creation of that survey is what the team will be working on.
What was the third thing?
And then there's focus groups and stakeholder meetings.
Stakeholder.
Stakeholders, so this is where, like the focus group would be open to the public. So you're having a drop in focus group or something like that in one of the branches. But another, another aspect of collecting data would be where you're inviting specific stakeholders. Could be education groups in the community, could be obviously like mayors and people who have investment in that local community as far as being a stakeholder. They're brought in as sort of a, more of an invited scenario rather than everyone's available to drop in focus groups and stuff, but they can't, you know, deliver the numbers on this place. So, but that's what the plan, that's what the team is going to be devising. We'll look throughout the organization, define the people with the skill sets, that qualities to lead the team and go from there.
Thank you. Sorry to press a large subject like that into a very few minutes. We're up another, it's another time constraint. I'm going to need a motion to extend the meeting a little bit to wrap it up.
We extend by five minutes.
It has been moved to extend the meeting by five minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything further on this strategic plan? Move it up, okay. Does anyone have a response to public comment that will be from a previous meeting or writings or so forth? Trustee plus.
Real quick, and I think I, I just want to reiterate that there's been a number of letters that have come in and comments that these hundred and forty books that have been taken in and put on shelves for evaluation by the director. He's totally entitled to do that. And our policy calls out CLN staff is supposed to look and clean up that material. So there's nothing going wrong with, with the staff doing that.
Any other responses to public comment? So given them, we'll move on to the next item. That is a discussion of future agenda requests. I, I have only one for myself here and it can go for down either way. The board calendar, I think we kicked it around once, we got a draft or two. And I kind of like to see an updated board calendar. And integrated in that would be the policies that are up for their review for whatever periodic it is, like a three year review, whatever. So we have an idea, we, where are we going with this? So it's not exactly a strategic plan, but I think that board needs to know, at least I do, if this is updated or not. I think, I think even the format was being pushed around once. So that's just one of my requests for a future agenda request. Anyone else have an agenda request for future? See plus.
Well, I, I think it was on the list, but from tonight's, or today's discussion, I want to pick up the acquisition, materials acquisition and selection policy and add, figure out a way to add those subjects or categories or to not wage cultural war on our children.
Anyone else have an agenda item request? No, I mean, none. Pardon me, oh, we show up, trustee, you have a question?
Okay, so we would need to have consensus, but with the board calendar, we did actually approve that at one meeting and then the director brought it back the next meeting. And then from there, it's just kind of a fluid thing and, you know, I, I think that he'll, he might put things on there and redistribute that. But I don't know that it has to be a calendar item. And, yeah, I would be for exploring wording about adding culture war stuff to the acquisition policy.
Yeah, I'm assuming that was noted by the board secretary. Okay. We didn't say any other special meeting dates or regular dates? The next one is the third week of February, regular meeting. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm getting hungry. In fact, I was hungry.
Still am.
I moved that we adjourned the meeting.
It has been moved to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank motion, Karen.
Aye.